Article and Finance Committee recommends. Do you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Lee's?
No, sir.
Fincom? Good? Okay. Article six. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of. We have a number yet?
We won't until probably next week. That's why there's no recommendation. Well, there is going to be a recommendation from the Fincom.
This is from the snow deficit. It's we had to do it. Yeah, it's a bill.
It was like twenty-ish, right?
It's gonna be probably somewhere around twenty-nine.
Oh, twenty-nine, okay.
Twenty-nine, somewhere around there.
You guys still good with that?
Oh, yeah. We have to pay you. That goes on the tax rate, so you take your choice.
Yeah.
Because that's what happens.
It's a bill.
If you didn't know, if you don't fund the snow and ice by June thirtieth, it has to be included when we do the tax rate calculation. So it'll get paid one way or the other.
Right.
This is the less for two weeks.
Yeah. Let's take it for free cash. Are you good with that?
Yes.
Perfectly fine.
And Fincom's good with it? Okay. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to reduce the FY twenty twenty-three way block regional district assessment by. We have a number yet?
Rough number?
No, we're waiting. Dawn had sent the business people over at the school an email. We're waiting to hear back from them.
Any idea?
Not yet. Nope.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll have that by next week.
All right.
There's money coming back, so that's a easy recommendation.
You have any questions, Beth?
Nope.
You guys are still good with it?
Stay with the least numbers here.
Okay, Article eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the assessors clerk salary the sum of one thousand to the assessors purchase services. And they're on to. Finance Committee recommends it's for a thousand dollars. And this is a board of assessors article. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
You guys still good? Article nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the amount of two thousand dollars to the boil and maintenance or take any relative action there too. This is our article. And are we just looking from?
We're gonna try to look at some surplus of accounts. We'll identify the funding source by next week.
And I think we need to bump that up though because of. Well, no, you said that Senior Center was going to handle their.
Yeah, right.
Okay, then we're still good at two thousand.
Okay. And Fincom's. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to transfer from. And we're gonna identify where the amount of two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents to pay a prior fiscal year invoice for Civic Plus for our website hosting services. This is for our town website. And you never got a bill for it. And by the time we did, it was too late. So. Do you have any questions about that?
No, gotta pay our bills.
Gotta pay the bills.
Gotta do what it's gonna do.
Is what it is. Are you good with that? Fincom?
Yeah.
Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the cemetery salaries the sum of thirty-five hundred to cemetery supplies to cover the cost of hiring independent contractors to perform maintenance projects at the cemetery. This is a cemetery commission article.
That was a late arrival to the Fincom, to me. And so Fincom had not had a chance to review that at the time of the submission of the article.
And this is because they need some specialized tree service?
Tree, well, she, you know, they wanted to do some tree cutting and some other work.
That's something that Highway Department can't provide because tree branches are over the stones. And they can't just drop the trees onto the stones. So they need a service to remove them. Did you have any questions about that?
No.
No, sir.
We'll be voting on it Tuesday night.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
But we're here talking about it. Jeremy's our tree ward and he's also the Highway Department's.
Yep.
So why wouldn't this? I mean, I understand that he doesn't have the necessary skill set to perform it. But I still think he should be in charge of it because he's in charge of all tree work. So should it really be under this? Or should it be under the Highway Department? Because those are the people that are providing the service to the town in ninety-nine percent of the cases.
Yeah.
But I don't think. But this, transferring from cemetery to cemetery, right?
Yeah, you can't transfer.
I don't think he could do that?
Yeah, you can.
Oh.
You can transfer from cemetery account to his?
Yes, as long as.
Oh, you want to go from, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes, you can.
Just let him control all the tree work, I think, that's all.
So it would go from from cemetery salaries to
You don't have our one.
Tree warden or highway?
Well, the Highway Department is overseeing the work. It's Jeremy.
Okay.
So he's.
Now, it's kind of the agreement is to make sure that everything.
He's dual tasking. Tree warden and tree removal and cleanup.
I have no problem.
But you need to check and I don't, you know, just let say this is what we're gonna.
Well, she had mentioned tree work and other, other services. So I'm not sure what the other services she was looking.
The only thing we really talked about was tree work.
This article says the subcontractor, so she wouldn't be able to do other services.
Well, hiring an independent contractor to perform maintenance projects.
All right, I see.
You know, so we may need some more information on that.
Yeah. Sure.
Because I think also out there, and I don't, I don't, I didn't bring my report down. But I think there's also an old article out there for tree work on town owned properties. That should be.
Well, I know he's been doing stuff along the roads. It was to pay for that. They have a contractor come in and cut some trees.
It's a different one that he might not be aware that is sitting out there. I'm just saying.
You have money sitting out there that he can sell off?
Well, it should be in his, you got the tree report?
I don't have all the reports. I just have, I just have.
I can get it later.
BLSS.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, I think it was tree for. I'm trying to think. I'm not sure where it is on the department. Who's under department, but I thought it was under tree. They took care of tree work here and, you know, we put it, I don't know if it was fifty thousand, sixty thousand. A few years ago, we put a lot of money to take care of just the town owned property. So it wasn't coming out of their expense account to take care. And I think there's some left in there. But I just need to look at the report.
I, I, I don't know about that.
I have to just look at the report and I can let you know.
Yeah, in the interest of I have.
And then if that is the case, then, you know, we could take part of that. And then she would just have to get back to us to exactly what else.
What other maintenance projects you were looking at?
And then get us the information and then we can vote.
I think one of, part of the thing she said was putting the water line in. And she had, they have to put it through. They're feeding it through an old pipe, a new pipe or something like that.
Yeah, but they can't see.
I know, but they can't do that, yeah. No, well, I mean, that's one of the other things she was looking at with this money, I think. Is to hire a contractor to do that. I should remember the same.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we can get clarification on. So would you like Cemetery to be at your meeting to explain it? Would you have thought of this?
If they're gonna break it out?
Yeah.
We'd like to know how much is going towards. Again, we talked about water and why wouldn't we have our water department do that?
There's a water department.
Well, it's Stranglary, believe.
The water department's not a town.
Yeah, the cemetery isn't part of the. No.
Water department lines.
Water department do that for me. Had a contract.
Yeah, this is on private property.
But I thought Jeremy was in responsibility. I thought Jeremy was doing the water service.
He's, he's digging the trench from what I understand. But
To do the.
To do the specialized work because it might be easier instead of digging it all up and pulling it out. They could put an insert and run an insert through. That would seal it up. So there's no leaks. And that would be like a plastic insert that they put in the pipe. He can't do that. That's like a specialized work to do. But I don't see how that would. I assume that'd be a lot more than thirty-five hundred.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but she was talking about using perpetual care money.
For that, for some of that, yeah. So I didn't know if that was part of this or not. I'm just, this is one of, these are the two things she talked about. There's the trees and the water.
So get more color. I think she let her know she probably should be at their meeting to explain it, so.
Well, that's why.
They get supportive, you know?
I knew about it because Jim had told me we got this article. He had to do it just seeing it today. That's why.
And she's, I think she's, she's gonna be drafting an article or the Cemetery Commission's gonna be drafting an article to take money from perpetual care to address the water main issue.
There's no, it doesn't have to be an article.
Well, that's what, according to what she had received information from Dawn.
It has to be an article.
Article to take the money out.
I don't know. I'll check with Dawn. Usually the expenditure just comes out of perpetual care. Doesn't have to be an article.
That's what she was working on.
So that's the only one we get questions on?
Well, till we get the information.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's for the special. Well, that went well. All right, move it on to the annual town meeting. The annual town meeting will be held immediately after the special town meeting. And that will be on May ninth, two thousand twenty-three. And that will be at seven P M. So. Article one, that's standard. Anybody have any questions about that? Eric?
No.
Article two. Standard. Good?
I'm good.
And three. This is the full-time firefighter for the fire department. Article three is to see if the town will vote to add a new full-time firefighter slash EMT position. And to raise and appropriate forty-six thousand seventy-one dollars for compensation for FY twenty-two thousand twenty-four or to take any action relative there too. Okay. We know that fire department's having problems staffing now and long here issues. Do you have any questions about this article?
No.
Do you have any questions about this? No, sir? Fincom?
We'd like to hold on this one till we get to the rest of the budget because it does significant impacts overall. And we understand that it's public safety and whatnot, but I think there's other ways we can probably fund this. And I would just like to. So we'll just go over this and we'll talk about it.
Hold more till the end?
Detail later.
Okay. You guys good with that?
Yes.
All right. Article four. To see if the town will vote to the planning board secretary in conjunction with building department secretary from grade C three to grade A one. And to raise and appropriate monies for FY twenty twenty-four. And this is a citizen petition article. And Finance Committee does not recommend this one. Do you have any questions about this?
No.
No comments?
No comments? Fincom?
The only.
Do you have anything on this one?
Well, the only thing, you know, and sure this goes.
Citizen petition.
But I understand it's gonna go on, but you want to know why we do not recommend. This would be circumventing the town personnel bylaw. If this passes a town meeting, which I'm sure there's going to be discussion about, then you might as well take the personnel bylaw and throw it out the window. That any hourly employee that's on the personnel bylaw. I'm not saying they can't put the petition article in. That's fine because you have to do it. But the town shouldn't be passing something where you're giving special treatment to one because it's just gonna open up a big can of worms.
It circumvents the process. And it circumvents the Board of Selectmen's rights as Personnel Board. Yes, it's a citizen position petition. It has to go on. But doesn't mean it has to be supported.
Right.
Because now any town employee, if we do support it, we set the precedent. And any town employee that's not happy with their current wage schedule can petition the town to have that raised. And it just sets a totally ridiculous precedent for the future.
Agreed. Do you have anything else on it? And you're maintaining you do not recommend?
That's correct.
Okay. Are you guys good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
All right. So Article six. Did I skip on?
No.
Article five.
Five is the same thing.
Same thing.
It's, it's, it's two different positions.
Changing from planning to building, then building to planning.
There's two petition articles.
Because that's how they put the petition in. No, that's how the petition.
That's how the petition was submitted.
Correct. Yeah, the, exactly how the petition came in has to be how it's on. There were two separate petition papers. And that's the exact verbiage because that's what I told Jim. It's gonna be exactly what it said on the petition.
Okay. And for Article five, do you have any questions about that one?
No.
No, sir.
Same logic.
Still not supported. Okay. Go on to Article six. To see if the town will vote to create a new position of Facilities Maintenance Manager for grade BM one on the wage compensation plan. And to raise and appropriate fifty thousand dollars. One hundred and twelve. For the FY twenty twenty-four, but to take any action relative there too. So this one's one that Finance Committee doesn't recommend also. And this is one that was put on by the Board of Selectmen. Do you have any questions on that or comments?
No.
No?
No, sir.
Okay. This one, I'll say a comment. We put this on because we're having some issues with the building maintenance. Trying to get that done, make sure you have somebody responsible to do it along with custodial work and other things that need to be done in the community. Current custodian that we have is responsible for doing seven buildings within the community. And this would also assist the Senior Center. Because we would have a janitor and a maintenance person to help out with custodial duties and maintenance and keeping track of that. And right now is questions about the custodial work being in the Senior Center. And maybe just consolidating that to this one position. As a janitorial position for the whole town. Instead of just having one janitor at the Senior Center. They would help with the whole town. So that's, that's kind of what, what the gist is for this. And to manage day-to-day maintenance operations, boilers. You know, getting contractors in here to do work, things like that, so. This, most towns have them. We just don't seem to have one. And we have one custodian doing seven buildings throughout town and nobody's responsible for any maintenance. There's light night maintenance within the position description for the janitor for the Shepherd Building. As needed, and that'd be some light painting, things like that. Nothing to do with contracts or putting out bids or anything like that. Maintain the maintenance or get professional contractors in here. Like electricians, plumbers, roofers. And to manage that position. So that's why we were trying to get this position so we have that that need filled. And I know Fincom doesn't recommend that. And, you know. You guys have the floor on that one? Do you still maintain not recommending it?
That's correct.
Yeah, I just got a couple of things that I need to say. Especially with this verbiage, that grade BM one on the wage compensation plan. This position is not on the wage compensation plan. I had asked Karen a couple of times to take it off. To take it, I know, I understand. I'm just telling you, but it says it's on the wage compensation. It is not. Because I saw it out there and I said, granted, when the wage compensated was. It shouldn't have been on there for the vote to start with because the position hadn't been granted. The compensation plan, because the job wasn't created. That's what I'm saying. It shouldn't have been there. Because I also was informed that the Department of Revenue said that this should not be on the wage compensation plan because the job was never created.
Right.
So that's number one. Number two.
Well, hold on. So sorry, so because there's no job description?
Because the job was never approved.
The BM one category.
It got voted down last year at town meeting when the, okay.
I thought it was BM two.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought something got on the pay scale, but then the position wasn't approved.
And then it has to come up because it shouldn't have been on there till the position was approved.
Okay.
And then it would go on to the wage scale.
But I thought BM one was custodial and BM two was facility manager.
I'm not sure what they are. So you're putting in, but it's still a new job.
BM one is custodian.
BM two is facilities manager.
Right. So you're saying this B two block should be gone completely?
It's not.
Yeah.
It's not off.
Not even on that. This is BM one.
So you're putting, all right, so what do you, you're taking the, because, so you're taking the the custodian. BM one, is that the custodian?
Yeah.
And then, so you're gonna increase this? And you're gonna have a custodian in the facilities getting paid the same?
Well, no, I mean, this.
No, I, this is why I confused. This is what I, all right.
This should have been BM two, I think, is what the intent was.
That's what I, that's what I ma-
BM one is custodian.
Right, that's why I masked because it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the second thing, the second question that I have is, so you're gonna want two. Manager and a custodian, right? This is what you're asking for. Number one. Okay. So the custodian down at the Senior Center is half-time. So it, would it be the intention of the town to ask him to take it full-time? If not, then we're gonna have to pay unemployment besides putting a new position in?
Right, and I thought the intent was that we're gonna have him as a part-time person helping out the the facilities manager because they wouldn't be doing all the other stuff.
So you're gonna have the facilities manager and a part-time person?
And a part-time custodian for now. Hopefully someday, if with need, we could expand that to a full-time position.
Wait a minute. So right now we have part-time custodian, full-time custodian. We're gonna get rid of full-time custodian.
Well, we have a part-time custodian just in the Senior Center.
So.
Okay, so what are we gonna end, so we're gonna end up with, what we want is a facilities manager and a part-time custodian? And no more full-time custodian?
Well, the, the facilities manager would be doing janitorial work too.
So you're talking one and a half or two and a half?
But he would also be supervising, but the part-time guy would go to the buildings.
We'd like to see also what a job description for this position would look like. And what the qualifications would be to fill it.
We have a.
I have a draft.
I, you nailed it, yes.
All right, let's see.
I guess I thought we were getting rid of a custodian because then I don't.
Well, we're not getting rid of.
But so, I'm confused. Is it two and a half positions or one and a half?
It's still one and a half position. It's, we're taking, we're taking a position.
The full-time custodian and moving them to the facilities.
Facilities management position.
And then keeping the custodian.
And then having the custodian, the part-time guy, help with the rest of the town. Where all he's doing right now is the Senior Center.
And is he keeping up with the Senior Center or falling behind in the Senior Center at this point in time?
Does he have extra time to do other buildings?
We don't have, we have other buildings to do, you know?
Yeah, but everybody had their own maintenance at one point in time. They still have that. I was just going through and there's still maintenance lines in a lot of these budgets and they're funded.
But they're no positions. It's, we have one janitor doing them all.
But correct me if I'm wrong.
And if Mr. Dusty, say, Mr. Dusty's out right now. We have, I'll get with you in a second, Beth, I see you.
Okay.
I don't want your arm getting too tired. You know, so if Mr. Dusty's out, we have no filling. There's nobody that fills in for him. The maintenance just doesn't get done. The bathrooms don't get cleaned. You know, nothing happens. So we don't have a backup to that person do anything. By doing this, we could have that part-time guy fill in and do that stuff also. Because the maintenance will be getting done for all the buildings, not just one building. It doesn't make sense to have one guy doing one building part-time. And then have another guy doing all the other buildings to include that building when that person's out. And filling all those requirements. Plus all the other things such as following up with boiler maintenance and you know, minor painting projects, getting trash cleaned up, trash removals. There's a lot that goes on with that one position. And all it is, is, all he is is really a janitor. He's doing way above and beyond what he really should be doing. There, there's, there's nothing in there saying that he's supposed to be doing. Say hiring a plumber and going to the police station and, you know, getting the boiler done. Or electrical work done at the sewer department and following up with that and making sure that's done. You need somebody that actually knows how to do that work and will have the time to go over there and make sure, okay, did the plumber do this? Did they actually do this work? Was it to par or is it still leaking or whatever's going on? We don't have anybody that does that right now, that follows up with that. Until we get a complaint saying, hey, plumber came in. Still broken, you know? We need somebody that maintains all that and maintains all that work. So that's the intent of it.
In the past, we've had, the department had themselves plan and appropriate money to take care of their buildings. Police Department had a maintenance budget where they would hire somebody to come in and and do their trash and clean your building. Fire Department, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, guys.
They didn't have one. Fire didn't have one.
Fire didn't have one.
No, police didn't.
I mean, in my own situation, we have three buildings where I work. Our facilities group consists of about probably fifteen to twenty people. None of those, none of those people empty trash.
Yeah.
They're skilled at certain aspects of their jobs. When we have boiler problems and we have water problems, we have to go in and hire an outside contractor that is skilled in those to do the work. It's a facilities manager's job to make sure it's done right.
Right.
But, I mean, if you're talking about three buildings, I'm a much, much larger maintenance workforce. And probably that person doesn't make much more than what you're proposing here as this manager. I just don't see the logic behind it. I don't, I don't think we're ready.
Were you thinking you should make more money?
No, because people make a little more, but that's, you're saying it's not the same.
The responsibilities are a lot.
Different.
Great, and assets are a lot different, I mean.
We're just looking to get somebody in the position and we know we have to be fiscally responsible too.
The original intention that we sold, sold to the town, we created this position here initially was to take the burden off of the administration secretary of coming in here before anybody got here. Cleaning off the stoops so nobody fell, wiping the water off the floor when it had built up or trudging the snow and rain in here.
Well, it's not the secretary's job in the first place.
Yeah.
But it was at the time, alright? And it was a hard sell for the town to accept that position, that's all I'm saying, yeah? You can put whatever article you want on there and we'll either support or not support. It's gonna be the town's vote on it.
Right.
And fifty thousand dollars for what we're asking in addition to what we, it wasn't that lot, three, four years ago, we created the position. It's kind of a big jump.
Okay.
Bev, on agenda, and I got something to say. Bev, go to Bev, she was waiting.
Bev, sorry, Bev.
Yeah, you made a statement that most towns have facility managers, which towns do you?
Huh, off the top of my head, I don't know. I can't sit there and say, okay, I know for a fact Brimfield does, I know Natick does.
Well, we're talking big towns, let's talk about towns like Barry.
I don't know Barry.
Well, go and find out which towns have the same population that we do. Then you call their town administrator and you find out what they have for janitor. So, I called Barry. They have somebody that takes care of four buildings thirty-two hours, washes floors, does the cleaning, does the supplies, does the repairs. As far as major repairs, they call somebody, a contractor.
Yeah.
If this person is out on vacation or out sick. She said, you know, everybody just chips in and takes care of their own trash, it's no big deal. So what you have to do is check with other towns like Hamden, North Brookfield. Towns that are, have the same population. Paxton, Hadley, Hubbardston. So you can't make a statement like that and say most towns. And the other thing, this facility manager, I mean, does he have licenses like electrical license or H-bag?
You're not paying a guy fifty thousand dollars when he has an electrical license or any specialized licenses.
Well, you're gonna ask him to check a job that's being done. So if he's not an H-bag, H-bag or, and we have a town administrator. We have department heads that are making over fifty thousand. I mean, if they have an issue, they call the town administrator or he's got an assistant. I mean, he can say, you know, contact a plumber or whatever. I mean, we're paying a lot of money.
We are.
What I think is maybe we should have a part-time janitor that would take care of the fire department. I mean, that's a small little area. And Chief Lavoy is very neat, so I'm sure there's not a lot of stuff that has to get cleaned up there. And maybe the sewer department, that's a small area, the highway department. And if you have to throw in.
And, and all that adds up.
Okay.
Because then you're gonna drive back, Bev, there's a lot more than just, okay, hire a part-time guy for this because.
How long?
You're gonna drive to those different departments, they got clean bathrooms, they wash floors, they take out the trash.
For a small area and then you have the other.
It's not just a small area, you know?
The fire department?
It has a bathroom that has to be cleaned, the trash needs to be taken out.
Does it take two hours?
I don't know, I don't clean them.
So then you have another person, just do the municipal building and the police department.
Okay.
Well, there's highway, there's the senior center.
Highway is a small area, they don't clean the garage, do they?
No.
Oh.
No, that's irresponsible, responsibility to the highway department people because, you know, that's that thing.
That's right. I think you're creating a position that we don't need.
But cleaning the bathroom and taking out their trash and doing what they need to do.
Point of order here, please, we have too many discussions going on, we'll just let one person finish speaking before the next starts to talk over them. Just a point of order.
It just seems like we're spending a lot of money when we have people that should be doing these jobs. The town administrator, the assistant, the department heads.
So first of all, doing, doing maintenance work and stuff, not the assistant's job.
Making calls.
Okay, the town administrator, he's been doing his best on that, but really, his job is managing the people in the, in the buildings. Dealing with the finance issues, dealing with personnel issues.
I know what his.
You know, there's a lot of stuff he does. If you've seen how many hours he actually works, it's ridiculously, he's always here.
I saw his job description.
So.
We're not questioning the administrator's role here whatsoever, so.
Now, he works butt off, you know?
We're talking about a particular position here.
Right. And that's what we're talking about, but Bev brought in, why can't the town administrator do these things too? And it's really not his job either. He's not to go out to these places and make sure that plumber fixed something. That takes him away from what he's supposed to be doing and his job performance. It just, you need somebody that can do that stuff for us. And I know the hesitation on it, I understand that. But, you know, this is one of those positions, you know? I support fully. It would like, I'd like to see it happen, but hopefully it's up to the town. If the town says no, we don't believe in it, then we live along again. But when things fall through cracks and things aren't getting done, you know, it happens, you know?
Two things.
Yes.
And then hopefully we can pass on because I think a lot of this discussion here is for town meeting. That's, okay. I mean, we were there and we know what was discussed last time. The, and the question that I have is that the custodian down at the COA only works fifteen hours. Are you thinking of increasing it to nineteen hours? If that is, we need those numbers for the budget. Number two, if the custodian is going to be doing this work down the senior center. The treasurer needs to know how much of his time and expense because the senior center is supposed to pay for, not the senior center. The sewer plant has to pay for their own expenses, they should be paying that in indirect costs. Just like, you know, just like on the indirect costs, they pay for their medical insurance, they pay for their retirement. They pay so much, and I don't know what the calculation is, for the town treasurer, for the town accountant. Because we pay the bills, the town treasurer takes the money, they pay indirect costs for services from the general fund. So, I'm just letting you know that, okay?
Have you been tracking that?
For what?
At the sewer department?
I, I'm not sure when Jim goes down the sewer department.
But I'm just saying, you know, and, you know, if that's what you're thinking to do, we need that information for town meeting. If, even if this position doesn't pass, if he's going to be going down there. The treasurer needs to do that, so for the article in their bu, in their budget, which is going to be, Article twelve, that number's gonna have to change for the indirect costs. Okay?
Last thing.
You had a question, Madam?
Yes.
Just identify who you are, by the way, we know what we talk, we wanna identify who we are.
Kathy Danis, resident.
Okay.
This position's a new one, so we're gonna keep the janitorial position, a full-time one, and a half-time one at the senior center. And we're gonna add the management position.
No. We're, the plan is to have a part-time janitor plus the facilities manager, okay?
So that will be a fifty-fifty job? Like he'll half-time be a janitor and half-time be a maintenance, a manager?
Yes, yeah, you know, as job requires it, the part-time guy will be doing cleaning, you know, and whatever can't be done.
I understand what he does.
The facility manager will do.
Now, have we been logging, well, it's Jim now, I can't say it's gonna be him, but have we been logging what he's doing all this time? Like how many hours of each department, like do we really need this? Or, I don't know, as a taxpayer, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, huh, looks like we have more management than workers. I, I go down to senior center, I see some of the issues, that's a building that needs more than three hours a day, I'm sorry. They serve food down there, they have people in there every day, it probably needs more janitorial work than any other building in this whole town. And it gets probably the least amount of time given to them. And so I have great concern if I have another manager thrown in there just walking around saying, oh, gotta replace a window shader. We gotta replace a piece of wood on the front of the building. I think I, I don't know, I'm looking at my, our department heads, I think they're very, very well educated, very well managed. And I think they can probably do some of that stuff themselves. They can pick up the phone and say, hey, I need a roof person, or I need this, or I need that. They need custodial work, real custodial work is what most of these departments need. As a taxpayer, I certainly wouldn't support fifty thousand dollars.
So can I say, like Madeline said, we've now, or maybe John, that we've now delved into like ATM territory? This debate should probably be at the meeting instead of here, is that correct?
Can we do that?
We can do the basics here, but we're like really going pretty deep into this now, so it might be better to. So I mean, we agree to disagree and.
Right, move on.
Yep.
And we might, and then we have to fix this.
Yeah.
So a finance position is they still do not recommend?
Yeah, that's.
That's fine.
I just have one quick. Can you just?
We really wanna just move on from this one, Bev.
Beverly Soltis Warren taxpayer.
Yeah.
Seven buildings, what are they?
So, you're dealing with the municipal building, the old town hall, the senior center, the highway department, the sewer department. The, um, the fire department, both fire departments.
Fire departments. And. And the highway.
And highway, yeah.
Did we hit seven?
Yes.
So what's the town hall? What are you doing with the town hall?
Police.
Police in there.
Well, you already, so that's one, two, three, four.
There should be seven.
Five, six.
Plus the sewer plant.
Sewer.
To fire.
Sewer.
Sewer.
Sewer to fire.
Yeah. Municipal, town hall, highway, sewer.
Okay, so we'll move on now.
Yep.
Got your answer, Bev?
I can give it to you, Bev, I'll tell you.
Okay.
Alright. So, we spoke about that one.
Can I make a small comment?
Yes, sir.
So I, I looked at some of the numbers, North Brookfield is smaller than Warren. Then looking for the facility maintenance director for a salary of fifty to sixty a year.
Just small enough.
All you're gonna do is your homework, so when you get at town meeting, you got your numbers that you wanna tell the people, that's.
Yeah, I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would we all?
That's what I told you before, you need to sell it to the people, not to FinCon.
Yeah.
We're gonna do a lot of homework on that one.
Alright, let's continue here, we're getting there.
Alright. So Article seven, okay, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate.
Yeah, we're gonna skip that to the end, that's the omnibus budget. Right?
Go whole.
Yep.
Okay, Article eight. Alright, to see if the town will vote to transfer from SCBA capital stabilization, the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to allow the fire department to expend funds and purchase SCBA packs and bottles. Uh, this is a three-year project and finance committee recommended this and this from the fire department. Do you have any questions about that?
No.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
You still support it?
Okay, can I just ask a quick question? Should Article seven go to the end? If that's the budget, because all these things will affect the budget?
No, no, the budget is always first before we get to Articles. These numbers are not in the omnibus budget. The omnibus budget.
From eight on?
Right, that's added in later. The omnibus budget is just the department and the department expenses and salaries.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to nine, thank you. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to create a line item in their budget to transfer wreaths.
Purchase wreaths.
Purchase wreaths for Wreaths Across America project or take any action relative thereto. Finance committee recommends this, and do you have any questions about that one?
That's creating the line, that's all it's doing.
Rich?
Oh, no, sorry.
Hello, sir?
Right, you guys are good, you recommend it. And Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand five hundred and twenty dollars to purchase wreaths from Wreaths Across America project, to take any action relative thereto. Finance committee recommends, do you have any questions about that, sir?
Do not.
No, sir.
Still recommend?
Mm-hmm.
Article eleven, to see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate the sum of.
We're gonna talk about this.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that one.
Later.
Yeah, for the minimum contribution to the school. We're gonna hold that one, the end. You guys good with holding that one, moving on?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to resolve the Town of Warren Sewer Commission. And finance committee does not recommend this one. And do you have any questions on that, sir?
No.
Nope.
Can I come?
Of course, same.
Good?
Mm-hmm.
Do you need any explanation?
Nothing.
Okay.
Maybe one comment?
Yes, sir.
One of the main reasons finance does not recommend this is because we're not yet in a position to have a public works department. Uh, and, I mean, we may have gone a different route had we decided that we're on the path to create that.
Well, that is the plan.
Yep.
It's the plan, but it's not, it's not in place yet, right? So.
And if it gets in place, then maybe finance would then support that in the future, so. Until it's in place.
I'm in favor of doing a DPW, but I think you need to, and not just hold hearings, because a lot of people don't come to hearings. You need to send out package information of what you're going to do. My opinion, I, they, the selectmen before tried to do this, but they didn't explain what they really wanted to do. So I think you should, it should be all done together. You take the cemetery, the parks, the highway, the landfill, and the sewer department. And you put it under the DPW. But it's all, should be entailed at once and it should be, and then you hire an engineer, because I think you need an engineer to oversee everything. So you'll have some cost saving from the boards and stuff, but if you're gonna do it, you do it right the first time and bring it all together.
Yeah, I think we were looking at doing baby steps.
No.
Because it's, it's a lot, it's, it's a big change, but it's something that the town has to move forward to do. And we all know boards, they tend to cause some issues in the process. And we're past that. We, we need to stop moving forward and, you know, getting professional people in these positions that can deal with these things.
But that's a DPW and that's very.
A DPW, yes.
You're not gonna hire a DPW guy to come in to oversee the Warren Sewer Commission. That, that, it doesn't even, isn't rational.
No, it's all under the board's selectment until a DPW is completely established. And again, we're trying to get that process started to move forward to that.
So maybe an article would be to look into feasibility of creating that department. Because personally, I mean, I wouldn't be qualified to do that. And I don't see anybody on the board that's really qualified to do that. So if we get somebody that's qualified to do that, we can move forward, but until we do, it's too risky.
So you could add that article on the annual town meeting to get the.
So what do you, what do you guys think about, instead of dissolving, create a feasibility study to create a DPW?
Sure.
I think the question should be to see if the town wants to create a, first, create a DPW and set up, you know?
Just word.
Whatever the wording is.
To move forward on this issue, right? Maybe next, we'd be in a position to start the analysis to create the DPW and how it's going to be funded, what it's going to entail. So the next town meeting we have, you can put an article in there to start moving some of these into that realm. I would support a DPW.
We do too.
That would be good, actually, because if the town really does say no, then we'll just leave it the way it is, right?
But we can defend it because I'm, I'm very concerned that by having boards and having all these issues, it costs more money to the town.
With fines and everything that we have to face.
Fines and everything, but if a third party comes and say, you guys, you gotta do this. If the town is the will of doing this study and the study says, yes, we have to, we have a win-win, we have somewhere to start.
Your cost benefit.
Even if we are not here anymore because it's delayed, already voted and it's going in that direction. Even if we are not here anymore, because it's delayed, already voted, and it's going in that direction.
In the DLS audit, most likely will support that, right?
Yeah. I'm not sure what they're gonna say in the, in the assessment for, you know, for boards, I mean, you know, historically, you know, they've said that, you know, it's, it's, town should move towards hiring professional people that are qualified to run, you know, the departments.
Yeah, as opposed to elected.
As opposed to elected.
Mm-hmm. So.
So what are your thoughts about it? Instead of dissolving, um, vote to, I'll have to see how we language it.
I mean, we still have time.
Yeah.
You guys can.
Well, we got till Thursday, so.
Well, next Thursday, the warrants go to these.
I know, but we, we vote on Thursday to close it all off.
To close it on the set.
And that's it, so this is the only time we could really discuss it before the final on Thursday.
Well, Jim can do the wording, the verbage on it, and then he can give it to, send it to us for our Tuesday meeting and.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we agree.
So do you guys want a commission, is, what I'm hearing, a feasibility study, is that?
No, 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 just ask the, on the town floor whether the town wants a DPW.
Okay, just, just like a poll question?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I guess would, would it be a non?
Non-binding question?
Non-binding, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, and then you get your answer there to say that, you know, and but make sure, you know, when you, you know, it becomes, you know, it'll be.
Then if we do a feasibility study, maybe they'd give a bit, bit of guidance on how to do it, instead of just saying, one department, you're gonna have to rip the main date off and do them all at once, or?
Well, but that's what I'm saying, and then you can put that on the special in November. You know, once you, you know, if you get the consensus that, yes, we need to do a DPW, and I would mention all the departments that should be under there, get that, and then in the fall, that's when you say, you know, at town meeting in vote in May, the consensus was to start a DPW, we would like to start a feasibility committee, and then just start it there.
So are we rewording twelve, or are we gonna keep twelve on and add this other one?
I would reword twelve, because again, still if we, we, we wanna know if the town would actually support it too. Like, and that's the initial part, like you're saying, let's see if they'll even support a DPW. And I think it's good, put each department.
Yeah.
That would be consolidated with it, consolidated with a DPW, and boards would be dissolved of their positions, and a DPW would be established, and they would handle that.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna replace twelve with this new language.
Yep.
Yes.
All right.
And then we'll let you know the recommendation, okay?
See, Madeline?
Yeah.
Smart.
Huh?
I said you're a smart woman.
Well, I.
That's another statement.
No, but John, when, when this was there, because, you know, I hadn't worked with John on finance before, okay? But I knew what the selectman intentions were before, and it, it just wasn't done the right way, okay? Cause, and they didn't defend it, and as soon as this come up, John goes, well, we need a DPW, and I said, you know, John, I said that a while ago.
And, and that's the point, you know, I think we just want to take baby steps, because it's a big thing.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like we could do this all.
I think the.
There's a lot of laws and stuff that need to be, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a heavy burden for the Board of Selectmen to make those decisions when it comes to a sewer department, cemetery department, because they all have different laws that affect each, and I, I as a resident can't expect you to keep up with all these laws, because they change, that's why we have department heads that specifically look at their certain areas of responsibility and see where they need to be changed, right? That's too big of a burden for.
And I, I like the idea of kinda, let's see if they can do the DPW first, because if they're just not in support, and we did dissolve, and they voted to dissolve, and then they took it later on, they said, no, we don't wanna do a DPW, then we're kinda stuck with it.
We would be.
I don't think we need to be stuck with it. You know, yeah, it makes a lot more sense, so.
All right.
Are you good with that, sir?
Yes, thank you for the suggestion, I think it's a good thing.
Okay. Okay, we'll go with the new wording, and we'll go with that. Thank you. Moving on?
Yep, we're ready.
Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to appeal the entity, uh, it's entity Article X.
What?
What?
Ten.
In its entirety.
Section six.
It's an entirety, entity.
Vote to repeal in its entirety, not entity.
Well, it's entity. And so it's entirety.
Yep. Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna change the wording on that.
Yeah.
Article X, section six, the residential requirement for certain town employees of the Town of Warren, general bylaws, as or to take any relative action thereto, and Finance Committee recommends this. And do you have any questions about this?
Nope.
Did you have any question?
Does it make sense to change to Article ten?
No, cause they're all, they're all.
It is Article ten.
It's Article ten, they're all X's and.
It's Roman numerals.
It's a Roman, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So when you, we read it, we should say ten.
Right, you should say ten.
Okay.
Ten, sorry. Not on my, Roman numerals.
Do you know your Roman numerals?
Well, I was still like, I was stuck on entity. I'm like, we're changing an entity, okay? So yes, this is to get rid of the requirement that somebody has to live within the Town of Warren jurisdiction, the radius.
Yeah.
Um, again, really limits us on who we can hire.
Yep.
So, and are you good with it?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
You're good with it?
Perfectly fine.
Are you still with it?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the personnel bylaws, uh, section two, management rights subsection D, maintenance as follows. Uh, maintenance, the, we're taking out administrative secretary to the Board of Selectmen, we're adding, town administrator shall periodically review the personnel bylaws and communicate any necessary changes to the personnel board. The personnel board will, uh, will decide if an article shall be placed on a town meeting warrant. And Finance Committee recommends still, well, recommends, do you have any questions about?
No.
No questions, sir.
Do you still recommend?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving forward. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the personnel bylaws, uh, section nine. Uh, vacations as follows, and we're.
Well, can I, can I comment if this was mine?
You wanna talk about this one then?
Yeah, it's just, the vacation area was vague as to what exactly it all meant, so I just added this, the red, and the strikeout to clarify what, um, what vacation should be. For example, five working days, we don't have five working days, we have four.
No.
So, well, okay, so.
Yes, Karen does, Jim does.
That makes it even worse, right? So, um, but in general, we don't have five.
Right.
Um, highway does, yeah, but, um, so this would just be the work week, that's what they get as a vacation, so.
That's what it should have been done at the time.
Yeah.
We're just fixing something.
Cleaning it up.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, we appreciate the clarification.
And Finance Committee recommends this one, you're still good with it?
No, I don't like it anymore.
All right, take it up.
No.
Now I like it.
Oh, now he likes it.
Now I like it.
All right, and FinCom still recommends?
Yep.
All right. Article sixteen, uh, this one's on bereavement leave, it's to see if the town will vote to amend the personnel bylaws, uh, section ten, leaves or absence as follows.
I don't need to read it all, David.
No, I don't wanna read it all, so do you wanna give us the gist?
Yeah, again, I just, the, the couple there in, in red, I just thought are more significant relatives than some of the others in, in paragraph two, and I just thought, well, that, you know, if it was my wife's father or mother, I would want a little more time, you know? If it's her brother, I mean, okay, but, you know, there are certain. Yeah, well. Yeah, okay.
Is your wife five?
She's not watching. Hopefully he's on it too, Rich.
You're on camera.
Yeah. Oh, am I?
So, so we're just adding in mother and father-in-law, and son, and daughter-in-law.
To find dates.
To, to.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
Moving from two to one.
Yeah, and FinCom recommended, well, they recommend this, and you're still good with it?
Still good.
You're still for now.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
I'm good.
All right, and FinCom still recommends?
Yes.
All right.
I just want, okay, go ahead.
Did you need to say something about it?
No, there's, there's a couple here that we were waiting for information that we didn't get to vote on yet, so you'll see if this, like the next one, there's no recommendation, because we were waiting for further information, that's all.
Okay, so Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of, uh, for the office building, improvements and related expenses to Shepherd Building and Senior Center, including but not limited to Warren, upgraded office furniture, painting, improvements to the building, or take any action relative thereto. That is a Board of Selectmen one, um, do we have a number yet?
Uh, we'll have a more solid number next week, once I, I get some of these bills that have just come in from, uh, some of the office improvement stuff for the Shepherd Building, so we'll have a better number, I, I, I'm estimating somewhere around thirty thousand. Um, so I think I'll have a better, you know, a more solid number with some factual data next week.
You'll have it before the air meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then just fill it in to let them see. Do you have any questions about that?
No.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
FinCom, do you have any questions? You can't, until we have a number.
Right.
And you'll have that, hopefully Tuesday. Okay, Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, uh, or transfer from available funds, the sum of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and eight cents to finance the operations, communications, salaries.
Commissioners.
Commissioners.
Commissioners. Sorry, commissioners, salaries, and debt service of the Sewer Enterprise Fund, or take any action relative thereto. And that's the Board of Sewer Commissioners. Okay, do you have any questions about that?
No.
Do you have any questions about that?
No, sir.
We don't.
FinCom, you haven't reviewed it yet, so.
No, but no, we don't need to vote on it, it's, I don't think we've done it in the past, have they?
No, as long as it's coming out of the Sewer Enterprise Fund, which the users of the sewer system pay for, uh, we shouldn't be putting that on the town, because there's a lot of town residents that don't have sewers, uh, so it's not their burden.
Doesn't make sense.
So it should be the burden of the users.
So can we add to that article, just no vote, FinCom, no vote needed, or to something to that effect?
Just put, um, it, no, no.
No need.
No recommendation.
No recommendation, okay, cause it'll come up.
Yeah, I don't know what we did last year, or the.
It was just left, right.
Left, right.
That's what I thought, because it's not up to us, you know, we're, you know, we're basically overseeing the tax rate, and this doesn't affect our tax rate.
Right, right.
So do you want something underneath it, or do you wanna leave it blank?
I think we'd, I would add something, I think.
I would say does not affect tax rate, because really, it's not affect.
Not applicable, but that's why, no recommendation, and then they can ask the question to Finance at the meeting is why? And then.
If there's any discretion on the floor, it may not be.
What would you like under there?
So, no, uh, no recommendation.
No.
Um, and you could put does not affect the tax rate. Right?
Yeah, because they're paying it for themselves.
Yeah. Okay.
Last time Finance recommended.
Oh, really?
What was the last time?
Last year, last year.
Last year.
I thought it was nothing.
Or.
I don't know.
It was very, bunch of turmoil here last year.
They were just learning, well, not just learning, but.
No, John was on before, so. Yeah, I, I just don't see that, they need our, our recommendation, you know, they're gonna have the.
We want us to recommend, we can recommend, and it's, but it doesn't really affect us why we're, we're here, right?
All right, we can take a vote on it at, at our meeting on Tuesday and give it to you.
All right. So moving on to nineteen, Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to accept funds made available from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for highway projects approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division, or take any relative action thereto. That's the highway survey. I don't think anybody's objected to this one, right? You good?
Yeah.
Good?
Yes.
There's no vote needed, it's money coming in.
You good? We're getting money, so. Um, Article twenty, uh, and that is.
The OPEB.
Yep, the OPEB.
We're gonna add a summary, um, at the top.
And that's to see if the town will vote to, um, for the OPEB fund, and Finance Committee recommends that one, and that's put forward by the town administrator.
And the dollar figure is twenty-five thousand, yeah?
Yes.
That's like, this whole thing isn't gonna be right on the floor, right? You're gonna have a.
He has to.
No, they don't have to read it on the floor.
Oh, they don't have to.
The moderator will say, as, as stated in the article, because they've done that before.
Yeah.
Just a two or three liner that first reading.
Right.
To see if the town will vote, whatever the two sentences says, and then generally the moderator says.
Explanation.
Now.
Yeah, probably that first bullet is what you need to say, right?
And then it says what you, what you have in your handout is usually what they say, what's in the.
Right, the motion.
And include, and the motion, I guess, have the dollar amount, right?
Right.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about this one?
No, sir.
Since this is yours that you put forward, did you have anything?
No, I, I just, uh, you know, this is a common practice, um, you know, this is to, to help the town address other post-employment benefits liabilities. Currently, right now, the town has a liability, an unfunded liability of about five million dollars, in excess of five million dollars. Uh, and this will help us, uh, to, uh, start addressing that. Um, and we'll put money away into this trust, um, and the, the trust will be administered, or the custodian of the trust will be by the treasurer, and, um, will help us start picking away at, uh, at the unfunded liability. And hopefully, um, it's my goal, uh, to continue on in this and to, um, help improve the bond rating of the town. They'll show us, show the bond rating agencies, uh, that we're serious and we're, we're socking money away, uh, to address unfunded liabilities.
Okay. And FinCom recommends, and, did you have any questions? Did I ask you already?
Yeah.
You're good, you're good, and you guys are good still, right? Okay. Okay, Article twenty-one, to see if the town will accept accounts in trust, the income of which is to be expended for the perpetual care, maintenance of burial lots at Pine Grove Cemetery for certain individuals for the nineteen oh nine plan of said cemetery, and take any act, action relative thereto, and that's from the treasurer. Do you have any questions?
No.
No questions? And FinCom, not even a thing for you?
Nothing.
So you're good? No, no question. Okay. Um, Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements during fiscal year twenty twenty-three, as permitted by General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F, or take any action relative thereto, and that is by the treasurer. Do you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Loes? FinCom? Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to increase cable advisory committee budget cap from twenty thousand to thirty thousand, or take any action relative thereto, and specific language from town college was coming. Did you have any questions to that?
Nope.
No, sir.
Finance, Finance Committee recommends, still?
Yeah, it's their money, it's just the last, I think.
Just ask it.
I know, the last couple years, they have to buy some big pieces of equipment.
They've been doing a lot of upgrades.
And they have to do the cap increase that moved forward on, so this way here, this is what it is, but since it's a town bylaw, because D O R changed all that years ago, it wasn't a town bylaw, so that's why we have to vote on it. Otherwise, it was treated more like a budget item, they could have just increased their budget to thirty.
Alright, Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to transfer for free cash the sum of four thousand for F Y twenty twenty-four fireworks and related expenses, or take any action relative there too. Finance Committee recommends, and this is Parks and Recreation Department, do you have any question about that?
No.
No questions, sir.
FinCom, still support? Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to establish a Parks and Recreation Department capital stabilization account for future purchases of play structure um slash large equipment upgrades, or take any action relative there too, this is from the Parks Department, and there's no comment from FinCom? Do you have any questions?
Uh, just to remove the period after recreation.
Yeah, me too.
You want that too? Alright, any other questions beyond that?
No, sir.
We're just waiting for further information on the next one of how much they, they feel the approximate total is going to be, and, and, yeah, the installed amount, so we're waiting, we'll be voting that Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay. And Article twenty-six, the T, see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of five thousand dollars to the Parks and Recreation Department capital stabilization account, or take any action relative there too. That's a Parks and Recreation Department um article. FinCom has not made any comment about it yet, and.
Nope.
Do you have anything? Mister Belize?
No, sir.
FinCom?
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night. Okay, Article twenty-seven, um, this is to see if the town will vote to re-adopt mass general law for Section fifty-seven, or take any relative, take any action relative there too. And this is.
We're going to give a description on this one.
Yeah, we'll have a summary.
A description of that one, um, this is from the tax collector, and Finance Committee recommends. And do you have any questions about that?
No.
No, sir.
FinCom, still support? And Article twenty-eight, establish, establishment of an opioids settlement account, and we're waiting for updated language from state and town council on that one, and that one's on the, on from the town accountant. Okay, do we know when we're going to get any information?
Uh, hopefully, uh, I think by early next week, we should have something.
Okay.
Well, we'd better.
Better. At least by Thursday.
Yeah.
Alright, um, do you have any questions on that?
No.
Anything, sir?
No, sir.
FinCom, you didn't have anything on that?
No.
Wait the language.
Well, the question was whether if, if the town could have a special revenue account or a stabilization account. There will, it will be a stabilization account, so Jim's going to have to get the, it's going to be automatically a stabilization, and the money, when it comes to the town, will be deposited there, but we weren't sure if it could just be special revenue or stabilization. We did get it.
And we'll have that all figured out by Thursday. Okay. Article twenty-nine, proposed general bylaw change, nine fourteen C for building in house numbers, uh, this is the current, uh, it's renumbering of houses, and it's going from two and a half inches and to four inches. Um, and some more clarification on that, and that's the. Yeah, this, okay, Board of Assessors. Um, did you have any?
No.
Did you have anything?
Oh, it's a good thing.
Yep, make it easy to see. Do you guys know any, anything on that, FinCom?
I just, uh, I mean, FinCom really doesn't have a say in this.
No dog in the fight.
It's dark, but uh, it's interesting that we've had the terminology lighting to these house numbers. I mean, a lot of times, we don't even make sure that our flags glow at night a little, so. Yeah, so. We're looking for some.
Yeah, yeah.
So, alright, so it's Board of Assessors article. And nobody has anything, okay. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to amend Sections twelve point three, point two, point nine, and twelve point three, point five, point five of the solar energy um bylaws, and that's a placeholder.
So that was just updating um the insurance section. Which actually suggested probably by you when we were doing the wind bylaw, so basically getting the wind bylaw had some updates, and we're just moving it, just two little pieces over into the solar bylaw.
Make it match.
To make it match.
Explain verbiage.
Yeah.
I have no idea what those.
Yeah.
So Rich, just on the clarification, these are changing on the zoning bylaws, right, amending the zoning bylaws?
Yeah, so, yeah, you might.
So I, I just want to make sure that.
That might actually.
That public hearings were done with that, and that they were properly, properly advertised.
Yes.
Okay.
It should say zoning bylaw.
Yeah, it should say zoning.
Okay.
And is it a, is it a fifty, uh, is it a majority, or is it two thirds?
Yeah, uh, Town Council will let us know.
I think it's two thirds.
Bev, do you have last year's? We, well, I know you do, can you look up the wind energy bylaw?
Yeah, she doesn't have the cert, oh, yeah, it should say.
The insert.
Oh, it's an insert.
The warrant from last A T M.
She doesn't have the inserts.
Oh, okay.
No, it didn't say.
Not the inserts, but just, it should say it on the articles.
It was Article twenty-four.
Yeah, and it would say on there.
It doesn't say, no.
I don't remember if it's a just simple majority.
Didn't have a two thirds.
So it's prob, okay, so it's.
Just majority.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, wait, uh, this, one of them had a two thirds, and one of them didn't, the decommissioning fees didn't, but the other one above it, uh, the wind energy and file required a two thirds vote to pass.
Yeah, I thought that's what it was.
Yeah, but the decommissioning one, and the lean, didn't require.
Correct, okay, because the, the lean is not a zoning bylaw change. It's just a general bylaw.
So, yeah, so then that would require two thirds.
Yeah. Town Council will catch these two.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's going to be the same this year, too, with twenty, uh, thirty and thirty-one.
Okay. And FinCom, you have nothing in it?
No.
No. Okay, and you guys are good?
Yes, sir.
Alright, and Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote uh pursuant uh to mass general law, Chapter forty, Section fifty-eight, uh, to impose as a municipal charges lien, a lien on real property for costs incurred by the town for large solar energy facilities, get decommissioning fees. And this is basically following up with the other one.
Yeah, just reflecting what we did with wind, as you just read.
And this is a planning board.
So this allows us to take the decommissioning fees and.
Is it mass general law or is it a town bylaw?
Mass general law.
Alright, so it should say M G L.
General law, M G L.
Oh, okay, so we should make sure we're consistent on all this stuff.
Yep.
If, if it's, okay.
Alright, um, you good on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Anything?
I'm good.
FinCom? Okay, Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to create a line item in the budget for highway for the ground maintenance work to be performed in the parks, cemeteries, and common areas, or take any action relative there too, that's a highway department article. And do you have anything on that?
No.
No, sir.
Do you have any information on this one?
Um, yeah, so I think that um, um, highway uh has been working with uh parks and, and cemeteries uh to address some of the issues such as uh wood chips and, and different things that need to be spread out uh in the parks, uh, and some maintenance issues in the uh, uh cemeteries, uh, and it is the intent of the highway uh surveyor to uh create this line, and to have it funded, Article thirty-three will address the funding um, uh, for, for these costs for the ground maintenance, and this was a, a, a late arrival to the, uh, to the articles, so uh FinCom has not had a position on it yet.
Okay. Okay, and FinCom, did you have anything, or are you just going to vote Tuesday? Okay, Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate.
That's the funding of it.
The sum of five thousand to fund the ground maintenance work to be performed by the highway department in the parks, cemeteries, and common areas, or take any action relative thereto. Do you have any questions about that?
No. No, sir?
No, and Tuesday, right? Okay, and that's a highway department article also, and Article thirty-four, to re, uh, see if the town will vote um, to transfer from free cash the sum of, and we're still looking at a number, to pay for an audit of all school budget um for the past five years, or to take any relative, any action relative thereto, and that's a Board of Selectment article. Um, do you have any?
Um, just for our own internal, I would see what like a three year versus five year would cost.
Yeah.
So, I mean, just for, for, for hypothetical, um, the town, which is a, a much smaller entity, um, you know, the audit costs us thirty-two thousand dollars a year. So now you're taking a regional school district, um, you know, you're probably looking somewhere around over a hundred thousand dollars.
For a three or five year, it just doesn't really matter, it's just that expensive.
Right.
Wow, okay.
But, you know, it's a regional school district, so it's a, it's a, you know, a bigger, bigger area.
That's, I mean, well, I, you present it to the voters, and if they want to pay that, we, we have to make the case.
Can I just speak for a second?
Yep, one, one second. And do you have any questions?
No, sir.
FinCom?
The school budgets are audited about by outside concerns anyway, I mean, as far as the expenditures go, they are audited, any school is audited on a yearly basis and have to pay, pass the state audits, so I don't know what value we would get out of that, I mean, it's really, I mean, I, I know we have problems with the school budgets, don't get me wrong, alright, and I know that some of them are under control, don't get me wrong. But that's the job of the schools and the school committees to get that back under control. There's a lot of useless spending there, but to come up with something that's, you know, it's water over the dam, right? We have to keep marching forward and try to get them more and more under control, and I don't think an audit would help us get there. I, I think it's the wrong approach personally, and uh, yeah, and we need to put more pressure on the school committees and whatnot to act accordingly, and I just don't think an audit is in the best interest of the town right now, it's, are spending that kind of money for what? What are we going to get out of it? Oh, yeah, they spend their money radically, yeah, so, no way of getting that money back, so it's like, where's that, where are we going to go with it? I, I don't see spending that kind of money for, for what? I mean, the school committee's behaviors and everything are legislated by the state, not local officials, they have certain requirements they have to meet, right, in their educational system, and if they're spending the money inappropriately, and it's their job to keep the reins in as much as possible, so.
I think you have a good point, I think one thing, uh, yes, financially, they get audited every year, but um we were looking for something that would say, you know, most likely, you know, this department has too many people. And that's just my layman's language, but, you know, you could consolidate and save some money here. Um, where the, the yearly audit is just going to say, yeah, you did everything okay, there was no, you know, malfeasance.
They, they check the receipts against what they were checking.
Oh, I'm saying this.
You're going to make matches to that.
Almost like.
We already know that, right, so.
Yeah, but it would help to kind of have it backed up by somebody who came in and said, yeah, you know, structurally, this could be fixed, this could be fixed. So, that's what the intent is, more than, you know, the numbers, so.
Make sure the money's being spent appropriately in the staffing levels. Now, we, if things could be adjusted.
I think it's assessment, it should be an assessment that you do, just like D O R is doing the assessment here, they call it an assessment.
Yeah.
Of the audit, yeah, or, right, they call it an assessment, per se. My, what I had said, and I think I know I said this to David, we were talking one day in Jim's office, I think you need to contact Desi. Okay?
So we, we talked about with the Desi, and Desi is really one-sided on this. And they, again, when we were talking about, they may come back and say, hey, you need more people, you know?
Well, then, but there's got to be companies out there that will do the assessment, if Desi, you don't trust them, but I would say it as an assessment, because what we want to see is what he's saying, you know, the teacher, student ratio, all these programs, you know, is, you know, why is it just going up and up and up and up?
Yeah.
And that's what we're looking at, why do you keep on going up?
But not an audit, it's an assessment, because the dollars, they give you the breakdown of the dollars already. This is what we want, this is what we wanted for, but the assessment's going to say, well, you know, this could be, you know, tweaked here, or this could be tweaked, or you could cut back on this expense, that's what you're talking about.
There's a, there's management assessments that are done out there, um, you know, like the Collins Institute. Uh, they, they, they historically have done them for communities, um, you know, they obviously charge. We could, you know, if that's the direction that the board wanted to go in, we can get some quotes for, for something like that.
So how, how would we word?
Well, can I suggest that maybe we could do like we're doing with the D P W, and ask the town if they're interested in um, doing an assessment of the district, and go from there? Because, because we really, we'd have to like go and kind of do an R F P maybe, and.
Depending on the cost, yeah.
Yeah, you don't even know what the costs are.
The state already recommends minimum contribution, right, based on the whole state. So, I mean, we're already spending well above that minimum contribution per town, right? So that's already telling you the state knows what we should be spending, right, so the audit against that, I just don't, you know, it's, we're already getting recommendations from the state of what we should be spending per student, but yet we're going above that every year, and, and it's always been approved.
Which is about to come up, and we're all going to be talking about that detail.
I don't know, it's just, you know, why spend good money after bad in practice, really?
I just think it's the assessment.
So, maybe if we, like you say, adjust it to say, if the town would support um performing an assessment.
Commissioning as a.
Commissioning an assessment on school. Say, finance and personnel, staffing, or.
Management, management assessment.
Management assessment.
Again, non-binding.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay.
Good one, Rick.
Yep. Alright, very good. You good with that? Think that's that?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's good because it, it's not our, it is our responsibility, because we respond from all the residents, but if we put it the other way, it was, or the way it is right now, it looks like we are the ones, but we are asking, you know, the town, would you like to do this? And then it's, you know.
Okay. FinCom, you good?
Yeah.
Alright, so change the wording on that. Thank you.
You want us to vote on that question, or just, um, it's nothing, because it's not any money, right?
Yeah, it's not any money now, so it's just, see if the town.
Non-binding.
Yeah. That was thirty-five.
No, thirty-five.
Nope.
Thirty-five is the, uh, meeting date.
Oh, yeah. So Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws of the town warrant, Article two, Town Meetings, Section one, date in form for annual town meeting. to see if the town will vote to move the annual town meeting to the first Thursday of June of each year, or take any action relative thereto. And that one was brought forward by the board of selectmen. And this is because of all the issues we're having with the school budget, and them not having their numbers, and we're trying to figure out everything, and we're gonna do the first Tuesday, but that didn't work out very well for the town clerk, so we did the first Thursday. And this kind of goes in line with Westbrook Fields' meeting dates also. So, we're both basically doing it around the same time in June, and it gives the school and everybody plenty of time to get the numbers in, so we don't have to keep on trying to plug and play with the numbers. So, that was just on that. Do you have any questions on that?
The other benefit is, as Adam pointed out last year, that a new select board member, brand-new green, would have a month to get up to speed before sitting in front of the residents.
It's all been where, like, our first meeting is annual town meeting, and I don't know what we're even doing here.
But it's no reflection on the new selectmen's.
No.
The other thing I just want to say, just as FYI for you, I looked it up and I explained to Jim, the only numbers that they're gonna be concerned with is where they're gonna do their cuts. I went back, what, three years, Jim, and pulled the cherry sheets? The number's never gone down, maybe one year it went down a little. What's usually proposed by the governor is what they get. So, their numbers as what they're getting for aid isn't going to change. It's, and they know the budget's coming, this is just me, I mean, you know, if townspeople want to move it, I don't have anything, I'm just saying, they know what they have, they know when the budget's due, just like all the town departments know when the budget's due. Do your job, start it early.
So, this gives them the time.
Right.
So, there's no more excuses, it's like, you have the time, you know, you should be in by then. Did you have any questions about that?
No, sir.
And FinCom? Good? All right. So, I think that would be a wise idea.
Yeah.
Because we got, we're gonna get some heated topics coming up here, and probably a restroom break for everybody. We'll do five minutes.
I'm gonna cut the Facebook Live and.
Yep.
I got both going.
So, we'll do five minutes, and. Yes.
All right. On, you'll notice in your budget, the second to the last line is.
How we doing?
This sheet here?
Yep.
Okay.
Selectment A.
Selectment A. The next to the last line is the municipal financial software. This is the new V E D A R program they're looking to get for the town. We talked as a finance committee, and we thought, since like the boiler maintenance for all the buildings is under you, that since it involves the town accountant, the treasurer, the tax collector, the assessor, and then if the building gets theirs, there's five towns, instead of each individual budget's increasing, if there's an increase each year, to have to explain, okay, the town accountant went up because of the software, the tax collector went up because of the software. This one, I thought it would be easier, we were in agreement, that we could put it under your budget.
Sure.
Okay.
No problem with that.
No, I know, I'm just saying, but I, when you read it, you're gonna say, well, where did this come from? Number two is the leases for the towers. I did not move them, but since the regional dispatch is under you, we thought that the tower leases should be under you, also because that's what the regional dispatch is gonna use.
Under your budget.
Under your budget.
The chief could still authorize to sign off on the buildings and stuff, because he's the closest to it, but rather to see his budget go through the roof, and.
Rather see our budget go through the roof?
Well, it's easier to explain that way.
Right, because the dispatch is there, but, you know, is that in agreement, and then I will move it there, the tower leases, if that's fine.
Can't we move it out of your budget?
I don't have, oh, yeah, we've got a budget, we, yeah, we don't got much, forty-two.
No, I have no objections, do you?
Yeah, whatever.
It's just multiple departments.
Yeah, it only makes sense to do that. Yeah, again, it's multiple departments, it should fall under, you know, our budget, the whole.
That's what I'm saying, before it was just the accountant has, and the tax collector had the software.
Yeah.
Okay, that, so, that was two. Now, we're gonna have like five people, sewers coming in also, and they got their assessment under the indirect costs. So, that's what we thought, but we just wanted to make sure, okay?
We'll be with that.
All righty.
All right. So, we're gonna go through the budget.
Oh, yep, police wanted to be first.
I know, they always, they need it.
It's a party.
All right. So, as far as the budget, we're gonna move to the police department budget first, to allow the chief to take care of some priority work here. All right, chief. Is there any question? You just want me to? All right.
I guess we just go with questions, right?
Well, if you guys have questions, because we've already.
You've already, you approved.
We haven't voted on everything yet, but we've talked about.
We've asked all our questions.
We've asked our questions, Jim asked questions on your behalf, so unless you have an individual question, a lot of these we could just, okay, okay, okay.
All right. So, chief's salary, good police salaries, any questions? Or you guys have any questions about any of this?
Yeah, that's the easiest way, because that was a contractual anyways.
No, sir.
No?
Your budget went down six percent?
So, I mean, that's kind of deceiving, because we had to rent the lease. So, basically, if you, just the incidentals that we actually use, it's probably going up about fifteen thousand. That's all contractual, and we had a officer that had a higher salary leave, so when the lower salary comes in, that brings down the supplemental, and the police salaries a little, balances out. What else did, the tower lease, obviously, I took it out, it's going to wherever it's gonna go to. And then, you know, that was part of my expense line, and then I had to add in the towns being required to get the E D R for our insurance.
Yep.
So, that took, it would have been more than the two thousand that it went down, but because we had to add that, it took it out of there. And everything else is contractual. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, the police maintenance and utilities, I had a conversation, actually, I spoke with Alan the other day. We hadn't added anything there, because we thought we were moving, the heat and electric was gonna go down, but we didn't move, and then heat and electric went up. So, I'm at the skin of my teeth right there with the heat and electric. So, I did add fourteen hundred, just to make sure that next year I don't have a problem with making it. E D R is, and Jim, if you can help me with that, that's N?
End point, end detection.
That's for.
It's for, it's another safety issue with firewall, with firewall, the insurance is requiring the town to get it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And where is that, what line item is that going under?
In his expense.
That would be, yes, the expense one.
Police expense.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
No.
You guys good?
Yeah.
We're all good with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
I'm gonna try.
Okay.
Happy birthday to your sister.
Yes, five-oh. Oh, I shouldn't have said that, huh?
Yeah, what are you saying?
We're on camera there, so hopefully she doesn't get done.
She tries to tell everyone she's twenty-six, but.
That's what you should have stuck with.
And now they're getting more, right?
It's time, or whatever, she can watch it on.
We will tell her.
Online.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Stay out of the bounce house.
Now, it's raining ball pit, right?
Okay, now, can I ask a question? Did you guys already vote on all your budgets?
As far as all the selectmen stuff.
Right, okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yep. We don't have any, nothing's changed, right?
Well, I did notice here boiler maintenance, did we set that at, did the selectmen set that at ten thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so that was, that has to be changed to ten thousand.
So, let's fix that one.
And then the financial software, that's the other change, right?
The financial software's there, now, that's only for the cloud, it will go up to twelve thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars next fiscal year.
Yes.
In twenty-twenty-five.
And that's guaranteed for five years, the same amount.
Yep.
And between the town accountants, it was two thousand, and I think the tax collector herself was seventy-five hundred, so for three thousand dollars, we're getting the whole thing for five years, basically, which I thought was really good.
Yeah.
Okay. Nothing else has changed since then? Benefits, everything else is still the same, it's all.
Yeah, she had an adjustment, she gave it to us before.
Do you guys have any questions about the selectmen budgets?
No, sir.
No? We've already talked about these on Thursday.
Yeah.
You good, Jim?
Yep.
Okay, FinCom, moving on?
Yeah.
So, overall, we ended up at a four percent in change increase, right?
No.
Total.
Except now we're adding in.
Well, another two thousand dollars, they have the best.
But then, we're also adding in the.
Yeah.
Right.
That, and then towers too.
Towers.
Oh, okay, well, that's good to know.
Nine hundred percent increase.
But this is good to know.
It can be explained off.
Yeah.
Right, this is four percent, but that we're adding something new in, so. Yeah, okay.
So, before the moves, yes.
Yes, right.
But after the moves, yeah, it's not bad, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
All right. So, we're good with all the selectmen budgets, right?
Yeah.
Who's the least?
Yes, sir.
Rich?
So, benefits and the debts, we're okay with?
Yep. And finance committee, your budget? And you didn't increase anything?
No.
You good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Good?
Yes, sir.
You guys still good? Accountant?
I don't know if Jim wants to address the...
So, um, the, the, um, the salary line for the accountant is contractual. The, uh, contract was settled with the selectmen on Thursday, so that has been updated.
Okay.
Um, the procurement, uh, expense, uh, you know, we, we were able to, I think we're gonna be pretty good at, at a two thousand dollar number, so we were able to take that down, um, from what it was originally. Uh, and that's to pay for advertising costs when we issue an RFP, um, and so forth. The actuarial service has been, uh, down because of, you know, of the year that we're in. It's only required to do a...
The full is every other year, this is just an update, it's seven fifty, next year it'll be whatever, five thousand, and then seven fifty or whatever.
Okay. And the regular expense line is the same, and the...
It's the audit.
Yep, yeah, and then the audit.
Audit went up?
The audit went up, yep.
Six hundred?
So, as the board, uh, may recall, a few weeks ago, they signed an agreement with, uh, Roselli Associates and Clark, Adam Wilburn, our current auditor, Jim Justy is retiring. Uh, and so, uh, Jim was, you know, very, very good to the town by providing the same price for, for many years. Um, that is not the case in, in modern day auditing, um, and to get an auditing firm in here, um, that's the going rate.
Okay. And you took out the chief procurement officer stipend?
Right, so that...
Because you're taking over that, right?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, that I will be certified by June, and I would make an appeal to the board of selectmen to, uh, appoint me as the chief procurement officer because of the fact that the accountant, um, really shouldn't be the chief procurement officer because of a, of a possibility of a conflict of interest when she certifies that funds are available to fund a contract, and she would also be in charge of issuing the RFP. Um, so, it's, it's recommended that a best practice would be that it, that, that, that a chief procurement officer be someone different than the town accountant.
Okay.
So, it, you have, we're taking it from the accountant, and you, where's yours? I know I'm jumping.
Very beginning. Mrs. Selectmen's B or C?
Town administrator's salary and expense, so don't you need a line item there?
No, I, I'm not, I'm not seeking any additional compensation for the, for the, for the thing. I'm not seeking a stipend for that.
No, no, I, I heard you the first time, but you're doing extra work, Jim.
Yeah, that, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not seeking it at this time, we can talk about it when my contract's up. I'm trying to give away money.
Well...
Yeah, but...
He doesn't want it.
He doesn't want it. Okay, all right.
All right. I'll sit on that one, or do you have any questions? You got him, and now let's go to Derek.
Yeah, Derek, you have any questions?
No, no.
You sure?
I'm sure.
FinCom, you're good. Any questions?
No, we don't.
Okay. All right, so moving on, you good? Okay, assessors' budget. Assessors, same.
It's not a revaluation year, uh, we went through a significant revaluation year last, or this current fiscal year, so, um, that's a big change for us, so we don't have to, uh...
It's every five years.
Why do your expense go up so much?
Because they have to update.
They're updating their CAMA system, uh, for, so Patriot software currently provides the CAMA system for, uh, the assessing, um, and with the new upgrade to VEDAR, uh, it was recommended to do it at the same time to upgrade the current Patriot software. Um, it's an old version of it, uh, and if we do it now, it will save us a little bit of money instead of doing it later, after the fact.
And they went down ten thousand for...
It's done every five years.
Reevaluation expense, so their overall budget went down two point six five percent.
Yep.
So, um, do you have any questions, or...
No.
No, sir, at least. FinCom? Treasurer?
And you'll see the, um, this, this, the software not included in the treasurer, it'll be part of the, uh, selecting budget.
Okay. And your budget went up a total of five point two five percent. Do you have any questions, sir?
No.
FinCom?
Is the treasurer's salary getting a step? Is that a step increase?
They don't have steps.
No, they don't get steps.
Oh, they don't get salary, oh, okay.
It's selected, it's a straight salary.
Okay. Tax collector?
See how hers dropped on her expense by eight thousand four hundred fifty, that's the software, plus some other things, but...
She went down on her expense, eight thousand one hundred fifty dollars. Tax taking, same, and her overall budget went down three point two percent. Three point zero. There.
Yep.
I clarified it.
Point eighteen.
Thank you. No questions?
No questions? Any questions, sir?
No, sir.
FinCom?
No.
Tom Clark?
Less than the, uh, one less election this year.
Correct, and, um, FinCom, um, the last FinCom committee wanted the elections broken down for the regular and the presidential separate, so that's why one shows it's over and under. If it's twenty-five would've been the total, but they, um, been, the other FinCom one, they're broken down, so, instead of the budget saying this, this year, twenty-five, or twelve, twelve thousand five hundred, and then twelve thousand five hundred, and twelve thousand five hundred, then it's presidential, then it's up to twenty-five. It's easier for them to see, right?
So, overall, the town clerk's budget went down?
Yeah, that probably doesn't work, because it looks like that, one of those calculations isn't right, so I need to fix that.
Yeah.
But, that's what I'm saying, it went down...
With the presidential election in there, it's twelve-five, but that's not gonna be in there?
No, it's staying there.
Okay.
Yeah, her total budget went down eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-two, I'm not sure if the percent is right, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so she went down eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Do you have any questions, sir?
No.
Any questions?
No, sir.
FinCom? Kate, planning board?
The reason why this is, uh, there's an adjustment in the salary here is because last year, um, there was an error in the salary line item was still there, and I believe that, that money was for, um, for training, to hire for, for training.
Oh, right.
Yep. So, that's why there's an adjustment there.
So, overall, planning board budget went down fif- fifteen point, uh, five seven percent. You have any questions about that?
No. No, sir.
FinCom? Conservation commission? Their... Conservation commission expense went up?
Yeah.
Why?
For, um, more work at Lucy Stone Park for the, um, gardener, or wherever you want it to go.
Maintenance of the plants they planted last year, the year before, whatever it was.
Any questions?
And the salary went down, was that a...
Well, because I think when, when they did it, it, I think, I, I don't know where, how, how many exact meetings they put, because it's meetings plus, plus the hours worked.
Yeah.
And I think she was probably allowed more hours before, but basically it's just been six now, but I think depending, when we got the information, they said, you know, they lowered it, so... Because it's hard to guesstimate how, how many meetings you have and how long they're gonna be, so...
Yeah.
They, they put in the request, we didn't do anything.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No.
Do you have any questions?
No.
FinCom? Good? Kate, building inspector? And so everybody knows, conservation commission, their budget went up five point five nine percent.
Well, because it's only a sixteen thousand dollar budget. So, without eight hundred thirty-three dollars...
Because I've been saying what the percent did, it's worth for the department, so I just wanted to...
Yeah.
So, back to building inspector now, okay?
So, this is the same thing, the training money was in there now, it's out?
Um, no.
Yeah, for the clerical, yes.
For the clerical?
Oh, for the clerical, yes, yeah, yep, yep.
So, the building inspector budget went down six point six four percent. Any questions, sir?
No.
You said lease?
No, sir.
FinCom? Yeah, good.
Just a quick, there's a typo on the total line, just, yeah, there's just a typo.
Should say building inspector to, total.
Yeah, just...
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I'm sure you don't want to join FinCom, but...
We talked to them, don't think we didn't, we talked to them, come on, Ray.
That is a very fine detail that you just caught there. You sure you don't wanna be on this?
We need it on the highs, you know?
That's it.
Is there a way we could just like, what's that, keel haul?
No, that's something.
Put it in there?
He's considering it.
He is considering.
All right, great. All right, Forrester now, oh, sorry, building inspector budget went down six point six four percent.
Yep.
Okay. And Forrester now?
No change.
There's been no change across the board, same thing, yeah? Uh, you good with that?
Yes.
I'm just saying, don't ask, you good?
Yeah, I'm not opposed.
FinCom?
People want to keep it the same, makes us happy.
No change in their budget, no up or down. Okay, veterans' agent? Salary's the same, veterans' expense went down?
The veterans' expense went down because when I met with Gary Lapine, uh, he had indicated that, um, he'd be willing to move the fifteen hundred dollars of his expense to, um, a line item within the selectmen's budget, the Memorial Day and Veterans Day program. So, you'll see that that line now has a fifteen hundred dollar increase, uh, for, for those programs.
But the money came from veterans.
The money came from veterans.
So, where is...
Look on your, your sheet, fifteen hundred dollars, halfway down on, under, selectman A, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Memorial Day.
You see the fifteen hundred plus, that's, it's coming from there, so it offsets it.
So, there's an overall increase of fifty percent, just move ahead over.
Right, but I mean...
Okay.
And we did, at the special town meeting last fall, put in the additional twenty for the, the veterans' benefits. That's why he put in for that, so... Because this is just, this shows just the approved budget from last year's town meeting, but we did give them twenty more, so...
The veterans' benefits, I believe, are reimbursed by the state up to seventy percent.
So, it went up twenty thousand, um, from seventy thousand to ninety thousand for our veterans' benefits.
It could change on a yearly basis, based on how many veterans we have in the program.
Yeah.
More people will come by.
Yep.
So, does the reimbursement go against this, his budget?
No, it goes to the general fund. The general fund technically funds this.
Yeah, but then it becomes free cash, ultimately?
Well, if, well, well, you can't say the veterans' benefit becomes free cash, no.
Well, the reimbursement, all right.
It goes into the general fund budget, so when you close your revenue and expenditures at the end of the year, what's left is free cash.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily, it's the veterans' benefits, or that it's the, this, or it's that, everything goes into...
Your thought process is correct, yes.
Yeah. So, technically she wanted to say, I mean, the only, the only one you couldn't say of the cherry sheet money that we get from the state is like the million dollars they give us for the lottery, because, you know, you can't say that rolls in free cash, because we pretty much spend, you know what I'm saying? But that's what it is, it's a cherry sheet.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Are you good with that?
Yes.
Are you good?
Yes.
Veterans' agent, and their budget went up four point zero one percent.
No, twenty-four point oh six.
Your four percent is total government A.
Yep, all right, so twenty-four point zero se- uh, zero six percent. Then it went up.
Right.
And, FinCom's good?
And then total general...
And then total government A...
Is all the ones we talked about.
Yeah, and that went up four point zero one percent.
Correct.
All right, um, animal control. So...
What happened to the vehicle stipend?
Because that was...
No water using her own vehicle.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So...
Right.
Maintenance, right?
Police donated their old animal cruiser, did.
Yeah, so...
It's a win-win for the town.
So, how does she pay for maintenance, or who pays for maintenance on it?
Expense account.
Okay, it comes out of expense, but that went down eight hundred?
That's what she gave us.
Oh, okay. All right, well, hopefully she can cover that.
All right.
Well, hopefully she can cover, I mean, the maintenance.
I mean, if there's a big repair, then, you know...
You can address it at the special.
You know...
Yeah.
Special or transfers.
Right.
You know.
Stuff we need to act, we need to act on.
She's not really pushing the vehicle to its limits either, you know, she drives it to a call and then back, and it's not like she's running with lights and everything, you know, high speeds.
That's transporting ponies.
Too small for the pony.
She may have a cat or something in there.
So, I don't know.
Cats do the car, my God.
Well, I mean, before she was...
Got caged, and plus you got the cage thing in the back, because it was a canine cruiser.
Yeah.
Which is good, because you can just grab a dog, and sometimes you can't get a dog in a crate, and you just open up the door, and you put it in the back in the cage, in the vehicle.
Right, because it's a cage.
So, it's contained, so...
So, basically, you know, for her, you know, oil changes and gas, and, you know, maybe, I don't know, tires are expensive, maybe that might, if she had to get new tires, you know, or a breakdown, you know, but...
Right, okay.
So, overall, her budget went up?
No, stayed the same.
It stayed. Yeah, it didn't go up anything.
No.
That's what I'm saying, overall, her budget went up nothing.
Went down, too.
It didn't go down, it didn't go up, it's the same. Um, do you have any questions about that?
No.
Good? Good?
Good.
FinCom? Okay, police department, we did. Fire department?
Look at all these numbers.
I know.
Well, he's got the fire and ambulance together. You want me to break it out, fire, and then we can separate ambulance, that can be done?
No, it's fine.
No good.
Adam wanted to say something on the leases.
Yes, excuse me, I did...
Chief, you want to speak?
Yes, thank you. Um, I did speak to both finance, the town administrator, and the selectmen on the break there. Uh, a mistake was, was noticed today, uh, and thank you, and my counterpart, Chief Mallette, there. Uh, he caught it, and, and I did not catch it. Uh, the number's not gonna change, but we do have to reorganize the three leases at the very end. The last three line items are in the budget... The last three line items in the budget, when I transferred them over originally from my Excel spreadsheet to the budget, I had them in an opposite order, and that's how the mistake was made. So the, the amounts aren't changing, but the, the actual leases themselves have to reorganize. So that was a mistake on my part, and I apologize for that. So what's gonna happen is the very first lease, that's an eighteen thousand dollar lease for FY twenty-four, that's actually not the American Tower lease, that's the Hampden Communications lease. The next one after that, the twenty-six thousand nine twenty-eight, that is the, it's not the SBA Tower lease, that's the American Tower lease. And then finally, the twenty thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollar lease, that is not Hampden, that is the SBA lease.
Now, aren't all three of those going over to Selectmen?
Right.
Yes.
And I'm gonna correct them before it.
And again, that's my mistake, I did not catch the, I put them in the wrong order, I apologize.
So you're trying to sabotage it?
No, I'm actually very glad you noticed it today, because I just didn't catch it. I, when I transferred it from one form to the other, I just had them in opposite, in opposite categories, and I just transferred the numbers over, so I apologize for that, but.
Sorry?
The good thing is the numbers are solid, and they're not changing, and the budget's not changing, it's just the party.
As long as it's not like Chief La Boy promotional stress funds or anything like that.
And also, you know, once we move those leases onto you, this percent increase is gonna be a lot less.
Yeah. Thanks for the nine hundred percent increase.
Well, I just feel that's where it goes.
We're gonna get crucified at a annual town meeting about that, because that's all they're gonna see is nine hundred percent increase.
No, I don't usually put the percentages out, it's just the dollars. But hey, that's what you're there for, to answer the question. That's why you get paid the big bucks.
Yeah, so back to our Selectmen budget then.
The big bucks.
Let's look at that big box. All right.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The new position is not in here, right?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. That's not in there, no.
All right, but I thought all the stuff before Article seven was in, but that's, no, I guess not, okay.
No, that's how it's done. It can't be in the budget till it's approved by town meeting, just like last year.
Yeah.
If I had put in the facilities manager under the Board of Selectmen, and you had the fifty thousand there, the article didn't pass, so your budget's overinflated by fifty thousand.
Yeah, now you gotta go back and take it up, okay.
Yep.
So Chief, was there anything else you wanted to explain about the budget?
Um, no, I, I know that FinCom has, I, I don't know exactly what they are, but they're looking at some creative ideas to, to help, you know, push through the support for this position along with the Board of Selectmen. I, I can tell you that I've cut in, in certain areas in the budget as much as I can to also take some of that burden off of the new position. Some of the changes that I've made were small changes in a couple of line items that I thought I could make some adjustments on for this fiscal year based on my budget currently, with not increasing some expense lines and stuff, so I was able to, to move about eighteen thousand dollars out of that budget to hopefully, you know, have everybody on board with, with supporting that new full-time position, which I just think is needed at this point.
Nothing's really gone up too much except for the advanced life support?
Yeah, so I, you know, I originally thought.
You had another one of those yesterday, didn't you?
Yeah, we have, I mean, we're required to, to call for any ALS, what they call an ALS intercept for certain calls. You know, those happen, usually we average between anywhere from eight to twelve per month, you know, for severe cardiac, you know, cardiac related issues or something. They can do a higher level of care than we, we can, so we, we call for them when, when needed. I thought that the state was gonna come in, we just had our, every two years we have our, the state, the Office of Emergency Medical Services comes in and they review everything about our license, they go through our ambulance, they go through our paperwork, they do all of that every two years. And we were just recertified, our service was just went through, and they found no issues or, and had nothing but good things to say, so we're good for another two years. I thought at that time that they may go down the road of requiring automatic advanced life support, so right now our EMTs get on scene, if they need it for whatever reason, they call for it, but sometimes the state is now pushing automatic regardless if, just based on the chief complaint of the call, which has become problematic, especially for communities, you know, because it's basically an unfunded mandate. So they have not done that at this point, so I felt comfortable with, originally I had that line item at sixty thousand dollars, because what's happened is the other communities that will provide an assistance with a paramedic, they're now charging, they've now up their, or increased their, their ALS intercept fees. So that's where those numbers are going up, so, you know, where they used to be two hundred and fifty dollars per intercept has now gone to four hundred or four hundred and fifty per intercept. So I'm just making those adjustments as we, as we go along here, but I believe that based on our numbers, I think fifty thousand dollars will be in that ballpark, and I'm willing to move it to, you know, from sixty to fifty to kinda meet those needs and watch that line item throughout the year.
And ultimately, that's a lot better than having our own ALS support, because if we did it ourselves.
Yeah, I mean, you were looking at, you know, at one point we were.
No.
No.
No helicopter. That's good, again, good, they're unblocked, but not this year. You would be looking at a very, I mean, this, this is something I'd love to do down the road, you know, looking at some options, but to be quite honest, you know, unfortunately, because of the shortages that we're seeing in public safety, a lot of communities that provide that are now suffering greatly, and they're barely able to provide it, or they're dropping down. So this is just not the environment to really go down that road, and you're probably talking hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that, and you're also talking to upgrade our current full-time staff, you know, for, to that paramedic level. So, you know, we, we call for an intercept when we need it, it's working, seems to be working well for, you know, what we do here, because again, we're just, we're really looking at the big picture and what other communities are facing, and it's just becoming increasingly hard for all of us collectively to operate here. So, so, you know, right now, I think that, you know, staying at the level that we're at and supporting that the best we can, I'd much rather have a good core, you know, BLS ambulance service and staffed well than trying to expand to something that we just can't afford or staff properly.
So BLS is basic life support.
That's correct.
ALS is advanced life support.
That's correct.
And basically, the gist is, if we, because if somebody argues, oh, why are we paying somebody else to do it? It's more cost efficient, because if we tried to do it on our own, we'd be in hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Because it's twenty, um, two paramedics twenty-four seven, right?
No, not necessarily, see, again, because the.
Well, they had changed it before.
Yeah, because, well, because, because of the crisis that's going on with staffing, the state has actually done a lot of different waivers and stuff out there, so you can actually run, I mean, some services are running with, with an EMT and a first responder, some of them are running with a paramedic and a first responder, so everything has changed because of COVID and the amount of people that have left the industry, and the state has taken some unprecedented steps to keep people running as best as they can. So, so now that the requirements are not where they once were, they're still very strict, I mean, if we were to be running at the ALS level like we were many years ago, you know, they would never allow us to operate the way we used to. It would be, it would require to do much, a lot more hours at a, at a, at a minimal staffing, you know, to, to even get to that level. So, you know, if you had a private service come in here, you know, they're gonna want a contract for half a million dollars or more, or something like that, to, to be able to, to take care of the community. So I think this is the best possible level of service that we can provide to the Fire Department, and we supplement it with an ALS intercept if we have to.
Thank you, Chief. Did you have any questions?
No.
No questions. FinCom?
Uh, just a comment.
Yes, sir.
Adam's quite aware of it, and I know it's a financial accounting burden for him, but all the money that we write off that we don't get back from the insurance companies from doing these calls, more needs it, right, this town. Some of the communities we support don't absorb a penny of it. So we'd just like to say, take a look at what that ratio is, so maybe we could approach these, our surrounding communities that we do support and pass it in the belly up.
Seems like we've been talking about that too, because we're kinda being concerned about how much mutually we provide for other communities. And it's kinda taking away the incentive for them to do their part if we're always doing footwork for them at our town expense.
We're all on the same page.
Yeah, and it's, it's concerning, and unfortunately, when it goes through a nine-one-one system, they dispatch you, and you're required to respond. And it's not fair to us, and, like, it's not fair to some other commu- communities, but there's certain pounds around here that seem like they're making cutbacks on that, and we're paying the price for it.
We just didn't know what that number is.
On that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, generally speaking, I, I will say that, you know, generally speaking, you know, almost all of our communities are covering each other. So none of us are, you know, we're all at that added burden right now, I mean, it's just the way it is. So, but I, what I am a firm supporter in is, you know, looking at, and we discussed this with the Finance Committee, and I can discuss it with, with the Town Minister and the Board, is taking a real deep dive into, you know, are, are collection rates competitive with other communities too? You know, I have different opinions in certain ways, I mean, we're, we're a small, you know, community, we have a lot of elderly folks, we are obviously, you know, you know, at, at a poverty line for a lot of the people's salaries and stuff, so I've always erred on the side of caution because I don't want an elderly, you know, individual getting a, a, you know, two thousand dollar bill from the Fire Department because, you know, I'd have them making that choice, because they're the ones that are gonna come down, or, or worst case scenario, where they don't, and they choose to, you know, cut back on their groceries or medicine or something like that in order to pay an ambulance bill. That's not what I want, I don't think that's what the town wants. So you gotta, it's a slippery slope, because you gotta be careful, but certainly, I'm looking at taking surveys of other communities, our billing company, and see what other communities and would, to make sure that we are at, you know, at least at, you know, a competitive level of our collections, and if we need to make an adjustment either way, and that money ultimately goes back to the general fund. You know, so, you know, that may be another way to capture some more revenue on the end. So I'm working on some of those things, and I will report back to both the committee and the Board and the Town Administrator on that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief. Anything else? I think we're all tracking on the same thing.
Yep.
Concerns. So we're all good with the Fire Department? Okay, Highway Department. Oh, I'm sorry, before I move on to Highway, the Fire Department total budget went up six point two eight percent.
But it's gonna get.
It's gonna go back.
But it's gonna come down. We move everything off, and then it's gonna go down like negative eight hundred percent.
It'll be, the final number, with, if my correction, if I'm correct, is gonna be seven hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
It'll definitely go down.
Yeah. So now on to Highway Department.
Okay.
What's the Highway expense?
I think that's just the.
Fuel.
Inflation.
Oil.
Yeah, okay.
You know, the prices have come down, but, you know, but they're still not way down, especially when you're driving those trucks.
Still high.
They're still high, salaries.
And for diesel, which is a lot of his vehicles, that's still way up there.
Yes, yes. We didn't have a problem with it. And the rest of salaries, so.
Pretty much low.
Yeah, a hundred.
And his total budget went up two point two eight percent. Do you have any questions, Bud?
No.
No, sir? Yeah. FinCom?
Uh, not as a FinCom question, but as a taxpayers' question. I've been after this for years, the tree work, we keep pretty stable there, fifteen thousand a year. I see more and more trees falling in the roads in the last couple of years, and being pushed off to the side, and I understand they're gonna buy the way to keep traffic moving. But I think that number is too low to really take care of the, the problems we have today, so.
So you wanna raise it?
I've been after raising it since I was in FinCom last time.
Under the Forester, because now they're, because they split that up years ago.
I mean, we have a lot more trees coming down, blocking roadways, taking power lines down. It's just, pay me now or pay me later, I mean, that's, that's what it's gonna boil down to.
Although, some of that work was done by National Grid, right? I mean.
It's true.
This past year.
Yeah, they don't remove the trees, they just cut them.
They cut them and throw them off to the side, they stay there a lot of.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they chip off the little branches and that's it.
And then you get a car coming down the road, hit an icy spat, plus five hits one of those trees, and they just push off to the side, it's not, you know.
No, those are guardrails at that point.
I'm just saying, it's something we may wanna, I mean, look at in the future.
Next year's project.
Did you ask Jeremy about that?
I didn't have the opportunity to talk to Jeremy, but I have talked to him in the past, both at Selectmen and, well, he wasn't, he wasn't, I talked to Ken Lacy when he was tree ward.
Right.
It's been ongoing.
It's been ongoing for a number of years, that we're not budgeting enough money to really take care of the problem, that's all.
Okay.
Do we wanna add that now, or are you guys good with it?
I think we're okay with it, I just think for future considerations, you know, we should be questioning that, whether we can keep up and maintain properly the way we have.
There's a lot of trees, since Jeremy.
I think what he's relying on too is residents coming and taking that wood, because they, they chop it up, they, they put it to the side. I've seen residents come by to have wood fireplaces and stoves.
Well, that's great.
They pick up the logs off the side, but not all the time.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not, if it's on town property, then the liability will, you know, it's, it's a liability issue as well, if we allow anybody to get in there and start.
Well, we're not telling them to do it.
Right.
What they do on their own time, they take their own risks.
When the, when we had that October storm, for instance, a lot of people went out there to try to clean out, but they ended up in trouble because, you know, lines were down, trees were on private property, da-da-da-da-da-da, and it just became, you know, so. Just for consideration for the future, that's all.
So overall, the Highway de- budget went up two point two eight percent. With the major expense going up was the Highway expense, nets for fuels and stuff like that, because again, diesel and stuff still is expensive.
Every commodity out there is going up.
Yeah. Thank you, do you have any questions, Bud?
No.
No, sir? FinCom, good? Cemetery Commission. Cemetery salaries has been taken out?
Yep. Moved into supplies.
Put into supply.
I think we're.
And so this might change Tuesday, right, or whenever, right? This may end up in Highway or something else.
That's an article. That's what we're talking about.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's an article, that we would add into this year's budget, but this is what they proposed.
Do you have any questions, Bud?
No.
Cemetery? FinCom? Okay, Board of Health?
Zero percent.
Sorry, Cemetery Commission, would that zero point zero zero percent? No increase, no decrease.
Before we go on the Board of Health, I'm just making it known that the town voted to do away with the landfill enterprise funds, so they are now under the Board of Health. Okay?
So the landfill removal vegetation is now gonna be done, stabilization tanks, it's gonna be done?
Well, we'll start on the first, we'll start at the beginning.
Okay. We have a new hire, Secretary, based on qualifications and skill set, she was started at a higher step?
So that was in addition of.
Thirty-one sixty-six.
Thirty-one sixty-six above, so a nine point two eight percent increase in the salary.
Correct.
And then the Cummings Pond one.
It was the Cummings Pond last year.
Right, the testing, you know, it went from three hundred to sixteen hundred, so it was a thirteen hundred dollar increase, which is a four hundred and thirty-three point three-three percent increase, but realistically, it only went up thirteen hundred bucks.
Well, Cummings Pond wasn't all the last year.
It was closed, yeah.
So they didn't spend the three.
So it basically doubled from twenty-two.
Yeah, correct.
That's why we need to look at it.
And landfill operation then went up three grand. And the landfill heavy maring went up six grand.
I think those three.
Landfill operation, it has to do with the PFAS?
No.
No?
The monitor wells.
Monitor wells, yeah.
But those are all contractual, as far as I know. But the big one, the twenty-four, has to do with the PFAS, now that they have to take the. But the big one, the 24, has to do with the PFAS, now that they have to take the, whatever it stands for, you know what I'm talking about? The FASs, conservation knows about it.
Oh, yeah.
So they have to start testing the wells for that now where they didn't before, so that's why.
Those monitor wells that are
Yep.
In the, okay.
That's why it went up to 24,000. I know in Vermont, they've been monitoring that for a long time, which is surprising that they're headless, but you know what I'm saying?
And then ultimately, the landfill remove vegetation, stabilize banking.
That's gone into the
Gone now.
Into the contract.
Into landfill operation, contractor is taking care of it.
So overall, their budget went down
Yep.
1.31%.
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Any other questions, sir?
No, sir.
FinCom, good? Okay, council and aging. So overall, their budget went up 4.44%. Do you have any questions?
Oh, so I mean, you know, no.
Any other question? Melissa? Go on, council and aging. FinCom, you good?
Yes, yep.
Hey, libraries. So the Warren Library, maintain the same?
No. What their budget, their budget was not presented to us as this.
It's different?
Yes.
So we have a change in that? Okay. So what's going on with the Warren Library budget?
So the FinCom committee voted to recommend the same budget as in fiscal year 2023.
Level service.
Yeah, okay. Why, what did they give us? What were they asking? Did they ask for like $20 million or something, did they?
One was almost 7% for Warren and the other one was
Here's Wes Warren.
And 7% is terrible.
It was 6. something something for Warren.
Okay, I mean, that's not.
So Warren wanted a 114,609. And Wes Warren
Won the same.
Won the same. So because Wes Warren last year didn't put in the same as Warren, if you look at last year's budget, it was 107,788 to 99,704. Generally, they've always been the same. So they, they wanted to increase theirs up to the 114, the same as what Warren had. So their increase was a lot better, bigger.
And so we, you guys settled with 107? Level services?
That's what we voted.
Level service. We've been after the libraries to combine services for many years now. We have two librarians. We own one building, the library owns one building, we rent another building. Each building buys the same periodicals instead of, I mean, it's just, we're doubling expenses because we think we're two different towns here. We're actually one town. Yes, we have a West Warren district and we have the Warren district. But by law, we're required to support one library. We have no problem with supporting two libraries. It's just that they have to start working together and pooling the resources.
Yeah, reduce the redundancy.
There's a lot of redundancy and, and that's the only point we've been trying to make for years and it doesn't seem to be moving anywhere.
Kieran can answer that. They don't wanna work together, right?
Well, I don't know. The effort's been made to
Yeah, I mean, lately, that's what I've always
Well, they've been doing it for years.
Talking about it. So they do a lot.
What, 10 years? 12 years?
When I was on FinCom before, it was the same, same thing. Every year, we were promised that, yeah, we'll work together and it's, every year, it's the same old, same old. And, you know, we believe in the library system, don't get us wrong. There's a lot of children in both districts that utilize those services, right? But yeah, we're just, right.
They need to sharpen their pencils, just like Quabog.
Extremely redundant, yeah, what we're trying to do there. Do we need both facilities? Probably, because we can't expect the children from West Warren to come into Warren.
Yeah.
And, and the Warren building is not handicap accessible.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Right. But somehow, you know, I guess, you know, so we just figured, you know.
Level services.
Level services. I don't, I mean, I feel bad, but, you know, last year took a big hit on taxpayers, as everybody knows, and I think
This year, we're
I think overall, no, overall, I think this budget is gonna be really good and the departments, our departments have done their job, even keeping their expenses down. The salaries, we can't do anything about, but we're, the town itself isn't here to pay the library salaries or, you know, I mean, their increases or whatever. It's not, they're not part of the town. If there was a town budget, then yeah, it's different. We have to look at it. That's, and because level, level service was direction, that's what we do. Okay?
Do you have any questions?
Well, was, when you went to the board meeting, I guess, earlier this month or last month, was there any more talk about merging?
They, they talked about it. They were showing interest that that's what they would like to do and, you know, work together. They talked about it and
You talked about making it one library with a branch, right?
Well, yeah, branch.
I said, I know the circumstances of the two buildings, handicap owned versus rented in two different places. I said, why don't you work together to reduce the cost? And you said, there's one library in two locations.
That's, yeah.
You know, because we can't consolidate in one building, so then consolidate one library in two locations. I know it's hard, but, you know.
And the thing is, is with the library, you can get a book from anywhere around, right now, the entire United States.
Yeah.
So you don't need duplicate books in both libraries.
No. Or the periodicals. I mean, if you're looking for something over there, they can easily ship it across town quickly. So would, would it help to sit, sit down with them to facilitate some discussions?
Maybe we'll have to do something in the future.
I mean, because you just talked
I think it's something that we'd have to do in the future, but right now, budget wise.
No, 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 I'm talking like, you know, over the summer or the fall or something.
Right, they've been talking about it, what, 10 years, I'd say?
Yeah, but maybe we can
At least 10. No, but what are you saying, the selectmen, he
Talk and action, right?
Right. This is, it's just an ongoing, it's been, the selectmen, you know, would meet with them and this and that and, you know, yep, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're, nothing's ever happened.
Okay.
Like I said.
So we're level services, so no increase, no decrease
No.
From last year's budget.
Correct.
Any other questions, sir?
No.
Any questions?
No, sir. FinCom?
No?
Okay, parks and recreation.
We just, we haven't actually over, you know, voted on this whole budget overall, you know. We've talked about some of the stuff, not everything, so.
It is increased here is because Cummings Pond wasn't open last summer, but now we're opening, so staffing?
Yes, that's that one. And the park expense has to do with programs that they haven't had movie night. I don't remember the list.
Because of COVID, they couldn't do them.
I know Jim's got the list of all the activities that
Yeah, yeah, both, when you say Cummings Pond staff, an increase of 669.60%. It's because they didn't have the staff.
Right.
Yeah, because it was closed.
Right.
But if you looked at the prior year, was that open at that point in time?
Yes.
So you're looking at 12,700 to 19,240.
So six something.
Yeah, plus the wage classification came into play, so the salaries went up.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. So and the rest has to do with their programs that they didn't do a lot of because of COVID.
So when you look at there, overall, it went up 87.58%, but again, that's deceptive because Cummings Pond was closed, didn't have the staff, and then with COVID, they couldn't run things. So you guys got any questions?
No.
No, sir.
FinCom? And total general government B, that went up 1.08%.
Correct. Let's look at total government.
Total government.
Two and a half percent, that's awesome.
Yeah, 2.49%.
Correct.
Vocational education.
Yeah, there's gonna be, you haven't got the numbers yet for the vocational
We'll have the numbers.
Jim will tell you about it.
With the vocation, this student is going to continue on and has been accepted for a second year at Smith Vocation. I was told that by the superintendent, Corinne Beninda, that the tuition is going to be the same. The transportation, she's still waiting to hear on. However, that when she did check with the vocational ed at Smith, it was disclosed to her that there's three additional, three additional applications for students to go to Smith. So they have not been accepted as of yet. The applications have been submitted. If they were to be approved and accepted into Smith, the town would have to fund that. And I would anticipate us addressing that at the special in November if that became the case. Because by the time we're notified if they're approved or not, it probably will be after town meeting.
I think the first year was August 31st, the paper was assigned, assigned, not last year, but the year before, it was August 31st.
So that's something to consider, that's going to, you know, you know, if it's gonna be the same thing, maybe we can save a little bit on the transportation, but it's gonna be quite expensive if all three get accepted.
So basically another 60-ish thousand in tuition.
Yeah, and then, then whatever the transportation.
So we need to keep that in mind when we get to Quabog.
So how are kids transported?
Quabog, I'm gonna say it right now, before we get to Quabog, let's take a break before.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, keep that in mind, that, that is possible extra money when we talk about Quabog. That's all I said.
These are for programs that aren't offered at either Quabog or Pathfinder. And it's typically off the radar. I mean, the one we dealt with this year, I think, is Animal.
Agricultural.
Agricultural.
Agricultural. But we can do Pathfinder and then if you wanna take a break, we can do that.
I just, I just wanna ask how, the logistics of transportation, so for one student right now, how is that happening?
It's a van pool, so it's one, one van that, that will come and pick up the student and bring the student home.
And you said they meet them in Brimfield?
I think there may be a meeting point there. Yeah, I'm not sure where.
So it's other kids in the area too?
Right, right, right.
So it would just be three more kids in that existing system?
Right, right. I'm sure there's a charge of some sort.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully it's at a reduced rate.
Because now they're picking up four, if, if it happens, four instead of one, so with that range.
We're not the only town that's facing this dilemma either. Hardwick, I think, right now has three students attending Smith as well. And they're looking at any way they can to try to reduce costs there, transportation. They were thinking about hiring their own driver, but then the insurance things come into play. It's a mess, so.
Making it to the vehicle and everything adds and it just
So it's, it's not easy.
Any other questions about that? So basically, we don't have a number yet.
No.
So.
Definitely one, definitely one student, possibly three.
Yeah, we have the, the tuition, just not the transportation for the one.
Can we do that?
Yes, sir.
You're on that one?
Yeah, he's hoping, and, and he's hoping that the superintendent gets back to us with the transportation on that for next week.
Now Pathfinder's assessment.
Yep.
Overall, from last year, they went up $11,027, which is an increase of 2.56%.
Couldn't we get Quabog to do that?
Of course, two initial students from town going, so.
So look at that.
The only enrollment went up from Warren, but the assessments are based on economic conditions of the town. You'll hear a lot of the other participating towns complaining because their assessments went up, but they're basically the wealthier communities. Ware went up because they have
A lot of commercial in there.
A lot of commercial, but not only that, their student enrollment went up, so they had to actually put another person on to the school committee from Ware. So the logistics all change as things change, the whole thing changes. So right now, with our economic status, the formula is that's where it drives us to.
So we're, it's advantageous for us right now.
It's advantageous for us where our, our income levels are as a town. If that changes, right, income levels are going up, then we will absorb a higher percentage.
Take advantage of it as long as we can.
Absolutely. So do you have any questions about Pathfinder?
No. I think it's great.
They do a good job.
Yeah, they do a good job.
Mr. Lee's?
Send everybody there.
Good. And FinCom?
Yep.
So before we get to Quabog, let's take a five-minute break. So, and we'll be back. All right. Shake the camera when he's ready.
That one.
He's ready. He already shook the camera. And the one we were looking at too. All right, so we're back again. Everybody's recording, everybody's planning. We're good?
Yeah.
All right. So now we moved from the Pathfinder assessment. And that was an increase of two point five six percent. Well, good with that. Now on to our Quabog district assessment.
Before we get started, I just wanted to say, the above minimum, me and Jim talked, we just put an amount in there to show you if that amount is approved. It's a draft number, what the percent increase would be, okay? And the debt's not broken down, and Don's waiting to get those numbers. You know, I can see three of them. All, all we've got is the one lump sum, but that number will be broken down for WCES, WCS repair, and then Quabog. But we haven't got the individual in that, so. But the debt number is correct.
Okay. All right. So do you have any questions at this point?
Wait, we can't, we don't have enough info on debt to even talk about it?
No, debt is fine. That's going to be debt. See how I put one sixty-seven forty-eight? Okay, it's going to be broken down by these, these other numbers, twenty-three ninety-nine. That total's fine, I just don't have the detail, Don hasn't got it yet.
So ultimately, it's going to go up twenty percent and just what's.
Well, because Jim.
Do we have the details on?
Well, so, so the reason why you're seeing an increase is because last fiscal year, they didn't budget properly for their, for their bond payment. So the bond payment was, was a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. And they only budgeted a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So this year's bond payment, the correct number is one sixty supposedly. So they have to, they, that's why you're seeing an increase.
Because they didn't put enough in last year.
So presumably in twenty-two, they had the right amount, then they went too low.
Yeah.
And now they're back on par.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
FinCom.
The, the only question is the above minimum, and you know, I mean, I'm not sure how you want to discuss that or what you want to do.
Yeah, let's discuss it.
I mean, you know.
So for above minimum contribution, they're looking at.
One point two four.
Well, one million two hundred sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and eight cents for Warren's contribution.
Wait, what did you read?
Yeah, I don't get that number.
One million two forty-six four sixty-two.
Yeah, that's, that was your request.
That's their.
Oh, there's a new number. We got a new number.
One million two forty-six?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got that number. You said, you didn't say one million two forty-six, you said something different.
You said like two fourteen or something.
Yeah, two fourteen. You read a different number to us.
One million.
Yeah.
Two hundred thou, two hundred and sixteen thousand.
Forty-six, that's a four.
Fourty-six. That's a four?
Yeah, four six, four six two.
That's why.
Yeah, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need to get my little readers for that tiny, tiny, tiny number.
That's why they're tiny numbers.
Yeah, it's like, could they make it any tinier?
Yeah, because I knew it would get bigger.
People see and I'm not just completely going blind.
That's why I have glasses and I can see it. That's why I said that it's a different number, I don't have that.
So we're at one million two hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred forty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Sixty.
Sixty-two. That's a six.
That's a six, not a five.
I thought that was a five and I have glasses on.
Yeah. If they do their budget again, can you please make it like.
A little bigger. Well, I think if it's printed.
Instead of using like three font, maybe we could use twelve font, like everybody else in the world.
Printed for portrait, it would be bigger.
But it has also four pages when it's printed portrait.
Well, I mean.
Do double sign.
I'm, I'm okay with more pages, as long as I can read it.
Yeah. Could also reduce the margins. These are like one-inch margins all the way around, you reduce it to point two five and.
Printed eleven seventeen, eleven by seventeen.
Yeah.
Make it bold.
Can we, can we get to the.
Raise, raise like.
We, we all got the number, it's way too much.
It's, it's a lot of money.
One point two X.
So FinCom, what's, what was your?
We haven't talked about it.
You haven't talked about it at all? Are you ready to talk about it?
Well, they can say how they feel and.
How do you guys feel? Because ultimately, we got to come up with a number right now.
I, I think we have to cut it. The town was hit so bad with taxes. People don't have this.
No, they don't.
I mean, I'm hearing horror stories too.
Reality.
We hear horror story, stories every year.
Yeah.
But the problem being is, we are now, there's a lot of people that are in unqualified positions. There's a lot of people working on waivers. That don't have the qualifications because of COVID, the state has allowed extensions to waivers and stuff like that, that they're not even really licensed teachers. Working in departments that require a higher level of understanding, but we're still paying them baseline teacher salaries. And whatnot. And, yeah, they're trying to do what they have to do, I guess, but it's a little bit out of hand at this point. We did a study on enrollment over the years, a couple of years ago, and I don't know what their enrollment numbers are this year. But every year, their participating towns' enrollments were going down. And they were trying to make it up by sucking in kids from other areas.
Yeah.
That comes at our expense. And yes, we need to look at the, the total picture, and I feel bad for Mr. Duff. Because it's, he's new in there right now as superintendent. But yeah. Definitely need to sharpen pencils a little bit more.
So it's eleven hundred students, eleven hundred and ten.
Eleven hundred and ten, out of that, the.
No, that's the enrollment for Warren and Westbrookfield.
Six fifty-one for us.
Yeah.
Correct.
Fifty-nine.
But what's the total enrollment?
That's.
No, that's for us, he's talking about that, ones coming in from like Southbridge and.
Yeah, we bus people in from Southbridge.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So that would be.
Yeah, right. Keeping the classroom somewhat full.
Yeah.
I don't want to be a naysayer or anything, but we have classes that are working well below what a full classroom should be working at. We're paying extra money. When you take a look at AP classes, for instance, you know, there's AP classes that, you know, we're paying higher rate for teachers to run those classes, but the population in those classes are pretty low.
So it's underutilized.
It's underutilized.
Or grossly underutilized.
See, that's, that's why we were recommending like having somebody come in and really look at these numbers.
I mean, we all know anyway.
Assessment, that's what it is.
You know.
I don't know.
For instance, you know, you might not want eight students, maybe you should have twenty students in.
You know, if you don't have enough class to fill the classroom, you don't have the class.
Or take two AP classes, maybe you can combine them somehow.
There's other ways of dealing with it, but I mean, I'm not in education. I have to do it all the time, so.
Especially he's got three sister-in-laws and his wife that are all in education.
Well, Linda retired.
One sister-in-law who's retiring this year.
And one's already retired.
One's already retired. My wife is still teaching.
And your sister-in-law is teaching.
It's, the schools are a mess right now. And a lot of the guidelines that the schools are working under are dictated by the state. So there's MCAS, which is, anybody you talk to in education and local education will tell you it's a joke, it sucks up resources and time and everything.
Yeah.
And the, even the school committees have proposed to the state that, you know, in their conventions that get rid of it, it's not working. You know. And, but the state mandates some of these programs, so they have to offer them or possibly lose their accreditation. And then if you look at what's going on in the world today nationally, college education, there's not as many people going in that direction today as a result of COVID and what happened with classes. It's just, just a mess and, you know. Just the other day, how many communities shut down because of disruptions at school? It's like Pathfinder had to close because COVID. Muntz and Close, if I'm not mistaken, Palmer closed their schools. It's just, it's a nightmare. We needed to get the schools back into the education piece of it and away from a babysitting type deal. I mean, we allow, there's no recourse for the teachers at this point to discipline, to do anything. They leave the kids in there, they disrupt the rest of the schools. To me, it's a, it's a mess. And I'm on the school. I believe in education. It's just that I don't believe the way it's going right now. It takes more than the schools to speak up. It's local legislatures and whatnot that have to say their piece as well, so the signal needs to be sent anyway.
So.
I've said that.
My, my opinion is this, and we've asked several times, and we made it very clear to the school to really sharpen their pencils. Do not come at us with another budget that's over a million dollars. Never mind one point seven million dollars or one point two million dollars, that it's, it's getting out of hand. And the town cannot afford to do that. You know, we've met with the school committee, well, the school finance committee, budgetary committee there. And we've reiterated that and they came down a very modest, what was it? Where did they come down from?
They were a hundred grand. One point, a little over one point three, now they're down to one point two four six.
So a hundred grand, okay.
So they came down a hundred grand. They're still well over a million dollar budget, above minimum contribution. I could understand things go up like fuel expenses, electric. Those are operating expenses that could go up. But in the same breath, as we're telling them, cut your budget, because the town can't afford it, we're handed a list of eight new positions to hire. That, again, it's not i- in the best interest, the best, best interests of the budget. Because again, our town cannot afford it. We cannot afford to even entertain one point two million dollars because the tax is going to go way up to absorb that. It's, it's ridiculous, in my opinion. And my understanding, the above minimum contribution was only a temporary thing, correct?
Well, that's what they said, that last meeting, I don't know, I don't think you were on, John, but I went to Westbrookfield. Brett was there, because we were given seventy-five, a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand, I think at one point two hundred, okay? And at this one meeting, Brett says, well, we need five hundred thousand from Warren. And this was in Westbrookfield. And I got up and I, you know, I said what I usually say, we're a low to moderate income, sixty, you know, fifty-five to sixty percent. And, you know, Brett said, oh, this is only going to be for this one year. I don't think we gave him that much anyways, but he made it sound the five hundred thousand number was just for this one year. And it just kept going up.
So how many years ago was this?
Oh, God, I don't know, I remember Dario was on the board, were you on the board then?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I don't want to say something that maybe.
So maybe a decade or?
Well, I've been gone three years, maybe five, six years ago, I would say.
And I would have been on FinCom at the time.
Right. I, I just remember that and I remember Becky, I think Becky, I, I, for some reason, I want to think Becky was there, I was there. I didn't speak as the town accountant, I spoke to, you know, spoke as myself and, you know, I said to him, that's why we get all these CBPG grants because we're, we're low to moderate income and.
Yeah.
You know, and at that point, Westbrookfield was, you know, they're in favor of giving all this money, but we just, you know.
So we've just gotten into a bad habit.
Okay, and I know the reason why for this, if I can speak. The state gave them an additional a million eighty thousand dollars in their, the chapter seventy went up by that. But their budget went up a million and a half. So why are they still looking for two million between Warren and Westbrookfield when the state gave them another? I know the reason for it because of the ESSER grant.
Well, they use ESSER funds to correct. To do it, which they shouldn't have done.
Correct. So now.
So bad, bad.
Decision is coming back.
Budgetary decisions have led us to this position now. And, you know, again, I can understand mild increases to absorb fuel expenses, you know, certain things like that. We don't even have an idea what their fuel expense is. We have their summary. And is there anything in there for fuel?
No, no, it would be.
It's just total operating.
That other sheet, we got another sheet or.
Few sheets, but I thought that was just the salaries. But that was just salaries. Is that what you gave me, Jim?
Yeah, that was salaries.
That was just salaries.
It was just salaries?
That's what Jim.
New, new positions, yeah.
No, but there was a whole mess of pages that was talking about the school, they had the three, I think the three separate schools' salaries broken down. That's what I saw.
I don't have that.
I didn't see the expenses.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, with that said, we, we've been trying to work with them and we've been trying to get these expenses and everything to be much more transparent. And I think we speak for a large number of the community, we're just frustrated now of this budget. And it just keeps on going up, and you want more and more. And, you know, after everything going up, you know, last year, you know, the tax increase.
Inflation.
Inflation and we're just not there in the economy anymore to be able to support such a thing. And, you know, I, I would understand. And, you know, I, I would understand if they came at us and they said, well, we need two hundred thousand above minimum contribution. Fuel expenses or for this or for that. You know, or a hundred thousand. Yeah, I could understand that. But, you know, one point three million dollars. Again, we've told them, don't do this to us. Don't put us in this situation. And this is not an attack on teachers or the professional staff there. We love them. We think they're doing a great job. And it's not that. It's the budget that's getting out of hand. And not having that transparency that we'd like. When we ask for certain things in budgets, we get accounting numbers. I don't know accounting numbers. I don't know where they are or what's going on. We ask for some additional information about salaries. You know, alphabetical, who's where, what town they work for, what, what school. And what was two thousand twenty-three salary and what's two thousand twenty-four salary for that, that person. So we compare. Didn't even get that. And for such a large budget. You know, we're getting very little information. And to be honest, it just goes there, disappears. And they move the money around. They ask for it in one expense count. And, you know, we've talked with Brett and he made it clear. If he needs money elsewhere, he just switches it. He moves it over to something else. And he inflates one budget. And then takes that money after it's been given to him by the town and pushes it other locations. And. None of us can do that in the town. Our budgets will not, where we say it's gonna go, it's going there. And if not, we get a request from the town for it to be moved.
But the schools don't.
The schools don't do that.
They have, the schools don't. They do what they want.
They, it's, we throw a large sum of cash at them and they do what they want with it. And. We can't afford it. We cannot do it anymore. That's my opinion of it.
Well, let's, let's talk numbers. I think we all.
What's, what's your opinion?
I'm, I'm in agreement. I think everybody here is in agreement. So let's get to Brett's tax and.
Mr. Williams wants to say something.
And I know my, what I'm gonna say, my equation is wrong because it doesn't work that way. But as a, just as a sample of how, how I see it. In Warren, there are seventeen hundred forty-five households. Out of those, six hundred thirty-eight have children. Now, if I take that two point, that one point two four six million dollars divided into seventeen. That's about seven hundred bucks that we have to pay each. I know it's different because we pay different rates, but if we were a big family and this is the. To make this happen, everybody will have to do, make seven hundred dollars to make it work. On real life, it will be different. You know, who pays more taxes will pay more and who pays less taxes will pay less, but that's basically it.
Yeah, the average.
Yeah. We all enjoyed it and it's a lot of money.
Dave, could I say something?
Yes, sir. Just identify yourself again.
Ray Capaco, a resident in Warren. First of all, just the role of the board is, and the committee, the, the finance committee, is not to figure out how to run the school. We don't have anything to say about that, to be honest. But it is the, the board and the committee's job to figure out how much to fund the school. That's the extent of your interest right now. How the school runs it, that's up to the school committee and the administration. I also wanna just. Respectfully amend a position you took, uh, the chair. Don't put us in this position by bringing this budget to us. That's the wrong way to think about it. Quay Boggs School Committee might say that if we propose, if we as a town and, and as a region. Proposed a budget to them. We don't have to defend what we offer them. They have to defend their expenditures to us. When Chief Lavoy comes before you, he has an explanation for everything he's asking for. To the, to, to the, to be honest, to too much detail, in my opinion. It's tedious to listen to it all. I say that respectfully and I appreciate it.
He's a great person.
He does his job.
And I do, I do appreciate it, even though it is a little tedious sometimes. Why use a hundred words when a thousand do a better job? I like that myself, so I, I understand.
I get it.
Okay. The school needs to come to us with a full explanation. If they need one point two million just for our town. Above minimum contribution, let alone Westbrookfield has to contribute. They need to justify that without scare tactics. I don't wanna hear how, I'm, I'm, I am so tired of hearing the same story over and over and over every year. For more than a decade, how the school will be decimated, et cetera. I've lamented this before. I'll stop. We don't need to be putting up any kind of a position. When they ask us for one point two million, we simply say politely, you're not getting one point two million. Now, you may get one point two million because you may find someone to make that. Recommendation at town floor, on the floor, town meeting to vote that amount in. But as a finance committee and as a town board of selectmen, we are not putting that on the warrant. The question is, what number are we putting on there?
Exactly.
I have one last thing to say. Do we know with the current budget that's before us right now? What the, how it would affect the town tax rate? Does anyone have an estimate on that?
Did you do it, Jim?
With which number, though, with, with the school?
If, if, if we, if we went with, right now, there's a stub in there. We're not committing to five fifty, but there's a stub in there for five fifty. And given this piece of paper we have before us, do we know what the town tax rate, how it would be impacted?
We'll have an, we'll have a number on that, you know, once everything is finalized. You know, probably within a week or two.
Do we have anything, if we pass and said. Say the one point three million dollars. If we said, yep, we're good, we pass that, how much would the taxes go?
I gotta look it up. Last year was one point two, so you can expect that. Second problem, just so you know, Ray, the town has a tax levy. And if our tax levy's at one million, okay? They get one point two and it passes at the meeting, then the municipal budget has to be cut by that two hundred thousand. Okay? If they get what they want, you have to cut your budget.
Were you doing override?
You won't have time.
You won't have time to do that, yeah?
That's two parts. That's town meeting and a vote at the ballot. You wouldn't have time. You would have to cut your budget. That's what, why Westbrookfield's trying to be really careful. Because that's what would happen to them. If they got, went to their meeting and they got the eight hundred thousand, okay? They don't have time for an override. They have to cut their municipal budget.
Well, that's one of the things they were talking about when we had our budget meeting is. They were talking about going to which one half override.
Next year. I had called back. Next year, not this year. If they, Westbrook, if we gave them the one point two, I don't know where we are with the tax levy, but because we did so much last year. If we have a million dollars and it passes, then the municipal budget would have to be cut by two hundred thousand. So then you're gonna start cutting your fire, your police, your highway. Those are our biggest departments.
So to answer your question, Mr. Capaco, we will definitely have a number for, before and, and ready for town meeting people. Before that. I mean, and it would be an estimate. These, these are estimates.
No, I understand it. I understand.
This is based on evaluations of the homes and, and different things. These were real estimate numbers. And then I gotta take into account with the spending for the articles as well.
I understand. I, I'm just curious if, if our old total bottom line budget is going up by two point one. Two point one eight percent. Based on these estimates that we have in this piece of paper before us today. I would expect our tax rate.
Would be about the same.
Would be.
Increased by that amount.
Not le, it, maybe, it certainly shouldn't go up more than two percent. I would expect.
It, it depends a lot on the valuation.
The valuation.
But I kind of.
I mean, if the valuations continue to decline, then you could have a problem.
Right.
Right. Because they have to do an interim adjustment. So they do the full revow every five years.
Okay.
This coming year, they're gonna do an interim adjustment. So say that ranches went up and colonials came down. When the tax rates calculated, ranches, taxes are gonna go up and the colonial could come down. It, it, it's a whole big formula. That's why I said to you the other night at the meeting, it's your, how much you have to raise.
Right.
Plus the EQB of the town gives you the tax rate.
So, okay, so with a presupposition, assessments stay flat. So just to, just to, just to get the thinking in the right direction. If, if, so that bottom line budget of going up two point one eight percent. That's a two hundred and thirty-seven, let's make it two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollar increase. That's with a five hundred and fifty thousand above minimum contribution stubbed in there right now. If that increased to one point two five, that's seven hundred thousand more. That means those town budget would go up nearly seven percent instead of just going up two percent.
Sure.
And that would definitely affect the tax rate dramatically.
Correct. And then you have to also factor in, you know, if those three students get accepted to Smith.
I understand.
You're gonna have, you know, a hundred, a hundred thousand plus.
That's another hundred thousand on top of that.
Plus transportation.
Yeah, plus transportation, transportation on that too, so. Well, then, then I'll just, oh.
Go ahead.
I'll just say the bigger consideration is, do we wanna continue this above minimum number? I mean, it's kind of enabling. Do we wanna continue to do this?
Because we don't have to give anything.
Right.
Right.
So.
I, my personal opinion as a resident would be that might be a bridge too far for the town. I, I'm fearful of that and I'd hate to see us get in a situation where it turns into. Trust me, I'd be all for personally, none above minimum. Because I think we've been bamboozled for over a decade with this situation. But I also don't wanna be just like, you know, kinda spiteful about it and just like try to slap them with it. I, I think we should do a little bit above minimum contribution. I think the town did a good job keeping their expenditures level serviced. With a, uh, total government spending went up, what, roughly a, a, a two to three percent number? And so a two to three percent above minimum contribution.
From last year's budget.
I'd, I'd be fine with something on that magnitude. That would be a couple hundred thousand, maybe. But there's absolutely no way. That, for them to. They've got some nerve and they deserve to be slapped to come and ask us for one point two X million dollars. That's an insult to me personally. I, I, I can't even believe they'd have the gall to do that. Shame on them. Shame on them. Pathetic that they would vote for that. I, I can't, it's egregious. I can't say it enough. It's, 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 it's irresponsible. It's not just shameful and an insult. It's irresponsible. Every one of those people on that board who voted for that should resign or be recalled or something. This is outrageous and I'm glad I'm on, I, I hope every member sees this. I'd be happy to say it when the school committee is there. I will be saying it on Tuesday when you meet with them at their budget subcommittee. It's, it's egregious. Plain egregious. I can't say it enough. I've just gotta stop.
But they need to hear it.
Totally irresponsible.
They need to hear it though.
They will hear it on Tuesday.
Well, we, we're vocal about it. And again, when I say you're doing this to us, we let them know, don't bring the number like this to us again.
Right.
Yeah. Again, it happened last year.
Don't let them hear, don't put us in that position. Don't, don't let them hear that. That, that's not the right way to talk about it. I, I don't, I say that respectfully. You know what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah. No, I know.
We're not chastising you. I'm saying, let's, let's get our thinking right about this. One last comment, a five hundred and fifty thousand number, again, just to use a number to talk about. That the, the ratio for Westbrookfield would be three hundred and eighty-eight thousand is what they'd be on the hook for to match us. To keep that ratio in place for the, for the regional consideration of it. My understanding is that they're going to be extremely hard pressed to even come up with three hundred thousand, which is similar to what they did last year. I know we can't answer for Westbrookfield here today. I just throw that number out there as a comparative number. That putting, if we vote five fifty, that puts them, that puts pressure on them to vote for three eighty-eight. And just one more little factor in the whole equation.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I did wanna inform the board that I did have a conversation yesterday with Pam Griffin.
Yeah.
From their advisory. And the conversation that I had with her was, you know, around, you know, what type of number were you thinking for above minimum? She had indicated to me that Westbrookfield has about a million dollars in free cash. Of which they're going to use two to three hundred thousand dollars of their free cash. To plug holes in their operating budget. And so they're not sure exactly how much money that they're going to have for an above minimum at this particular juncture. But I think she was around the, around the lines of somewhere around no more than five percent.
So I was just doing five percent. On last year's budget. And. It brings this year's total budget. To five million four hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-five cents for five percent. So that's a difference of, and I'm not very good with math here. While I look at what. Two hundred and eighty thousand.
What difference? What's the difference? So I don't know. Were you, were you taking your five percent and adding it to?
From town of Warren from last year. Oh, that's the proposed. Actually, never mind. That's the more. So it's actually, should be less. Let me go to them. Clear that one.
Yeah, five twenty-three plus five.
That's what we gave them last year.
Point one two percent's the five fifty-ish.
Yeah, I'm not looking, I'm not, I'm not looking at last year's, the five fifty. I'm looking at, honestly, I'm looking at what, what is it, a five percent above?
You need to add your Warren minimum in the transportation. You need to add those numbers. So it would be three million seven something and then take your five percent, because above minimum shouldn't be in there.
No, no, it shouldn't be anything. It should be zero.
Right.
We shouldn't even look at the five hundred or anything like that. So who's really good at math yet?
I can do math. Even on a Saturday.
Cause I'm sitting here, even on a Saturday.
I'm a little confused.
Because I'm looking at.
Are you trying to add the two points, the minimum local plus the transportation of last year?
I would say.
Well, no, just add it this year, Warren, above it's two eight eight six.
So, so Madeline's gonna do the math. So at least we're on the right track here.
Let's go to the math head for it.
Yeah. We got a person for this.
That's all right. Ray's sitting there too. I think he is too.
I guess I just don't understand.
So what's five percent above?
Last year.
Oh, above that, well, right now, the five, the five fifty stub is a five point one two percent.
Five percent would be a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. If you take the two eight and the eight eight, that's three whatever and it, would that be eight percent? I, five percent?
Five percent is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand?
Yeah. Yeah. Let me do it again. Two eight eight six.
I still don't understand what you're doing.
Oh, sixty-seven.
You're not adding in though.
I know what the, why are you taking? So you're saying what they're gonna get in the new fiscal year and add five percent to that is the above minimum? Is that what I'm reading?
Correct, yeah. So we're gonna take what we have to give them. We only have to give them the two eight plus the eight eight eight.
Right.
Okay.
Nine nine four equals three million seven seventy-five.
Hundred eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Multiplied times point oh five is a hundred eighty-eight thousand seven fifty-three.
So my honest opinion is that's what we've gone with everybody else. Their budgets are, the ones that have increased about five percent. Our above minimum contribution should be only five, five percent above.
I assume that's what Westbrookfield's talking about, right?
What was that?
Or are they talking, I'm talking to him.
I think they, they were talking, I, 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 I don't know. I mean, I thought they were talking about a total of five percent.
Oh, with the above minimum minimum?
Yeah, yeah.
So take last year's total, which you multiply times point oh five.
Well, that's what we have here.
Two seven seven three, right?
No, I'm talking about the total. He's thinking they, they're including it. Take the four two oh eight eight sixty-four.
Four two oh eight, where's that?
It's last year's.
Last year's final version for Warren total. Total operating, four million, two oh eight eight six four.
I don't see a two oh eight number on here.
I don't see a two oh eight number on here.
Well, that's what mine shows.
She's on the, she's on the school supplied revenue expense sheet. She's on the school's supply sheet.
Cause that's what the total was.
Yep. He was looking at our...
Yeah, I'm looking at the budget. Okay, so you want to take the...
Four two oh eight eight six four multiplied times five percent, point oh five. I think that's what Westbrook Field was saying.
Times five percent?
Yeah, times point oh five.
Two ten four forty-three.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
So five percent above that?
Yeah, but you're also taking your...
Why aren't we even offering five percent? By Tom, which only went up barely three percent. Why aren't we just going with the three percent? I know a few went, a few went up higher here and there.
And some didn't go up at all?
Right. And the minimum contribution that the state says we have to make, takes into account all these varying things, the increases and varying things around. Why are we going, why are we, oh, we're giving five. Why are we starting at five?
Or just say the number?
I just put a number in there to figure the percentage.
But I'm thinking, why? Why aren't we just offering them the same as what our town is bringing up?
And that's, that's what we're talking about.
And that's still above the minimum, that's for sure.
Above minimum.
Make it, make it an even two.
And you're telling any positions, that's ridiculous.
At two percent?
No, it's two hundred. Make it an even, round the one eighty up, up to two hundred. So, keep it simple.
You get two ten.
But that's including the above minimum.
Yeah, I know. That calculation includes, I don't think that's right then. Cause it's like compound interest.
Well, we don't want to bring in last year's above minimum.
What I'm saying, Rich, I think that's what Westbrook Field was saying. We want to give them five percent for the, of the budget, right?
Yeah.
That's what the impression that I got. So she was talking about five percent of what the total was for last year. That's why I said to look at last year. And if we put a number in there, they can't go above it.
All right, if you do, if you took two seven seven three and nine twenty-one. And added our final two point four nine percent, it would be about ninety-two thousand.
So if you went three percent, it'd be five hundred thousand.
So, I mean, I think, I mean...
And that would probably cover increases in fuel, whatever else are...
I think we asked the department, the town.
Exactly what the rest of the town's doing.
And the transportation is going down.
Right.
So they're actually, they're making a little more money. Cause it's going down by, what, forty thousand-ish?
We got slammed last year because it went up four hundred thousand. The year before, that's what hit us good on the taxes too.
And if, if Westbrook Field does more, then we would just have to adjust?
We would have to go into a regional meeting.
No, not the first time. They come back to the town. And the town would have to hold another special town meeting. And if they vote down again, then it would go. No, but the school committee also has the option of just accepting it too.
Accepting the counteroffer.
Correct. But they wouldn't do that. They would make the town, and you would have to have a special town meeting and just, and then, that's what happened. And they still wouldn't take our number. That's when we went to a regional.
So three percent would be a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and eleven. So if you want to do a straight a hundred, it's like two point nine maybe.
Well...
I, you know, I think maybe what you need to do is you're going to the meeting on Tuesday, come back with more information. I'm just saying. I mean, I think a hundred thousand's...
I think this is something that needs to be hashed out now.
I think a hundred thousand's kind of cheap, you know? I, like David's two hundred thousand. That's my opinion.
Well, I think it would be good to wean them off of this amount. So like Ray says, we're not being punitive and just like cut it to zero, but maybe we cut it in half.
Right. So it was five twenty-three last year, so give them two seventy-five.
Yeah. And then, and then the year after, we'll go to one something. And we'll just whittle it down.
That's...
Until we're back to zero.
That's if whoever's here next year says, oh yeah, well, wean them off.
Basically, it's always...
Derek's here next year. I'm here next year. And you'll be here next year.
But what I'm saying...
There's no guarantee on that. And then you, you would have gone through a reelection.
Right, but the, but the budget would be done.
I lose, you have two new board members, and they may say, let's vote in one point five million dollars. Well...
But what I'm saying is...
Good luck with that.
Yeah, well, we're all paying that price at that point.
Well, yeah.
Should I get my boxing gloves?
Yeah.
See, we took the ring.
Yeah.
We should have kept that and went to the box.
To, to be honest, you know, I...
Cause like I said, me and him talked and I said, what do you want me to put in?
Everybody else for the town has, it, it had modest, modest increases. And we're looking at like, you know, some have no increase, some had a five point four. You average that out, it's about a three percent increase. If we did a three percent increase, then that's our number.
Yeah.
One ten or one eleven would be three percent. And I'm taking...
Even if you wanted to be generous, you could have one twenty if you're like a one eleven or whatever, just keeping an even number, but...
Okay. So that's the two seven seven three and the nine twenty-one plus three percent. And again, that's generous, cause, well, it probably evens out. Their minimum local goes up, but the transportation goes down, so it probably evens out.
So what do we add a number here? Let's...
One, call it one ten, I guess, right?
So one ten. Are you good with that for above minimum contribution?
Uh, just to make it, I'll, I'll say two. Two hundred.
Two hundred? It's not even on the table. I know.
But give it, bring it up. Put it on the table. Well, Rich said half. Half would be two seventy-five at first. You know, that's what I'm saying. You said half of the five twenty-three.
Well, no, I got five twenty-three, half, I got two sixty-two.
Right, that's... I know.
Okay.
I, I, I like nice round numbers. Five hundred thousand, half is two fifty, but it was five twenty, so I was saying two seventy-five.
Oh my God.
But I said two hundred, you know?
Okay.
Whatever. This is your vote.
I want to know your opinion right now.
Mine?
Yes, your honest opinion.
My honest opinion is, whatever is above minimum, we should express it a percentage, right? If that's three percent, it's three percent. If it's four percent, it's four percent. And that's the way people will easily understand it. You know, it's, this is what the state says the school's operating budget should be.
Should be, yeah.
Should be. And we're gonna give an additional three percent or four percent above that. And that's the number. Whatever that number may be, that's the number we come in with.
How much is four percent?
And I don't, I think that's fair and equitable. It allows them to go back and sharpen their pencils and figure out where they're gonna be cut.
And it's, it's across the board for the town.
I mean, you just look at, there's so many areas that can be cut to finance this, if they want to finance. I go to, I run up South Bridge Road every day, right? I stop my car every five feet.
One fifty.
Right? Because we're picking up students, right? Students from this side of the road to this side of the road, five, five foot difference, you know, and the bus is stopping, and I'm hanging up there. I understand for the children and everything, but we also have to clear the sidewalks so these kids can get to school. But yet, you know, just taking out the number of bus stops you have along the route probably save you a ton of money, right? So, I'm just saying, there's all kinds of ways to, for them to approach it and attack it. They just gotta use their heads and sharpen their pencils a little bit, that's all.
So here, here's the thing. I agree. Should be a percentage. Okay? What percentage are we gonna do? Do you want to do three percent, or do you want to do five percent, or what do you want to do?
Do two and a half percent, four percent, whatever.
Well, Rich cut, I told Rich to do four. He's doing it right now.
Yeah, hold on. Uh, four percent is a hundred and forty-eight. Three percent is one ten. Our budget went up two point four nine, so...
Well, we've got numbers that aren't in there yet either, so there's a few more numbers that need to be put in.
Okay, that was back to the ninety-two thousand I mentioned. So three percent is probably good because, like you said, we have extra stuff that may go in there.
All these raisin appropriates that we voted on for articles is going into our tax rate.
Yeah, yeah. So, we can do...
Are you good with a percentage?
I am good with the percentage, sir. I think it's...
Are you good with three percent across the board for the town?
I think it's a good number because we are taking the whole town going through it. You know, it's like, it's, we're all in the same boat. And it's not that we are telling no, but we're just showing a little bit of reality of the situation where we are. I mean, we said it before then, if we could, we would give you two million dollars above minimum.
Yeah.
But we don't have that now.
It's not there.
We, it's not there, so...
The bad thing is, it doesn't look like they've made an effort.
As a, as a...
At all.
No. As a board member, we're giving them a percentage that is across the whole town. I think it's, it's fair. And then, it goes again into the floor. But, you know, our responsibility is, we have everybody behind us, the whole town, who represent them, and we're saying, this is the right thing to do. You pick.
You know, they're gonna put another number on the floor anyway.
Well, no. No, no. What I'm saying is, me and Jim talked about this. Okay? Right?
Well, you know, I, I think you should put a number in, in, you know, in here.
If you do, if you pull it out of the omnibus budget, put an article on specific for that, they cannot raise it. They can't raise more.
Right.
If that, you do it as a separate article, not in the omnibus budget and say to see if the town will vote to raise.
Well, that's what we have, right? We have that.
No, but it's in the omnibus, this year you did it. But, once you put that total dollar in, they cannot increase it in an article.
And I think, Jim, if you talk to Westbrook Field and say, look, this is helping you guys out because your budget is so screwed that...
Yeah, I mean, the only risk here is that if, if Westbrook Field wants to go higher, then we're gonna have to...
Then we, we deal with that when it comes. But we're gonna do what's best for our residents. I personally don't care about Westbrook Field and what they have to do with their residents. I care about our residents. And right now, our residents are hurting. And it has to stop now. And I'm really pissed off that they did, and I understand, right? They did this to us again. They brought this number to us, and it's ridiculous. And we gave them more than enough time to say, fix your budget. Don't come back at us with a one point seven, one point three million dollar budget, above minimum contribution, cause it's not gonna happen. And that's exactly what they did. And in good faith, after they whittled their, their number down, they dropped to a hundred thousand? For a million dollars? No, I'm sorry. We can't do, we can't do it no more. Our town's hurting. So anyways, okay.
Well, so, um, Westbrook Field would, I think if I did this right, they'd have to come up with seventy-eight thousand for our one ten. So I think that would put them in a good position. I think they would be able to, that's comfortable for them, I'm sure.
So let's say, three percent. That's our number.
We're basing it on three percent, but our number is gonna be one ten. We'll put in one ten.
It should be a solid number, not a percentage.
So, but we went up like three percent. So we're looking at one ten for above minimum contribution.
So Article eleven is one ten.
Are you guys good with that?
Yep.
FinCom, you good with that?
Oh, you're just doing, you're just doing the above minimum?
Yep.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if it should be the whole thing. Or that...
Do you need to put less in there?
No, that, what, how, it would be like the normal finance. That for Quabog would be the total. Assessment. It would be your debt for one sixty-seven forty-eight, plus the two eight eight six oh sixty-seven, plus the eight eight eight, and then plus that. That would be the total that we get.
But this says above minimum contribution.
That's what we're talking about. I said, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if you want to say, this is their total.
No, no, no. I think we're defining our total as minimum local contribution plus transportation for last year. That's what we're working on.
No, this is saying the above minimum.
Where?
Right. I know. I thought it was going to be the whole thing. And that, that is telling them, that's all you're getting.
Yeah, our above minimum contribution is a hundred and ten.
All right, that's fine.
Because we can't change the minimum local. We can't change transportation.
Okay. In the omnibus budget, it's the whole total. Here's the total debt. Here's the, the, their assess, um, the total assessment. That's just how it's been before in the omnibus. That's all I'm saying.
Well, we could...
But just for the above minimum.
We could, Madeline, could we word the article to say, a hundred and ten above minimum contribution for a total of X?
What, how I would word this, if that's what you're saying, I mean, you can check, council's gonna do anyways. So, you would add those, what the state says we've got to give them, the transportation, and you add our debt plus the minimum. Okay? That's your total. You can then say, the above minimum total, cause you're gonna give them the breakdown. When the motion is read, this article is for... Two million eight eighty-six oh sixty-seven for Warren minimum. Transportation, eight 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 nine nine four. Above minimum, one hundred and ten. And the debt is the one, where's it?
One sixty?
One sixty, seventy, forty. That's the total. If you put the total in there, you give the breakdown, it's the same thing, but then they're gonna see. Because then, cause what I would thought we were gonna do is take the whole thing off the, off the FinCom book. Because this is in the FinCom book. This is an article. Okay? You see what I'm saying? It's a separate article. So you should have the total. And then you read the breakdown.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
But we're looking at our above minimum contribution is a hundred and ten.
Right, but you're gonna read that.
That's it.
It's gonna be in the motion.
It'll be in the motion of the article.
Right. And I'm gonna take the whole thing for Quabog out of the FinCom book. Okay? Here, where it's Quabog. And this, this is coming right off. Because you're gonna have it in the motion on the article. So this'll just show Pathfinder and Volgate in the FinCom book.
Last year we had that issue because we had to take that out.
Can you look at this? Is this what you're looking for?
Correct.
Okay.
But the total number that's going to be here, not this, is this total.
You want that?
That there. And then when you read the motion, it's gonna be for debt for this.
Okay.
And one for this above minimum and the transportation.
Right, okay.
For the total.
This is what she's...
So our debt, yeah.
So we, the article is...
So we'll just list all that down.
Four million.
Right, in the motion. You don't have to put it in the article. You can put it in the article if you choose. There, you can do there too. And the motion should be the same.
Okay. Yeah, I suggest we put the above minimum in the article so that it...
Yes.
So it's clear. And it's clear.
I just have a, kind of a parliamentarian question. Why couldn't, why couldn't an amendment to that article be offered from the floor?
If it's an article, they can't raise an article. Once the amount is published to the, in the warrant, you cannot raise it. You can only lower it.
That's true with any article.
Okay, all right. I wasn't aware of that.
Jeremy asked for fifty thousand for a truck.
And then he gets to the floor and someone tries to amend it to sixty thousand. That's, that's, okay, thanks. I think I knew that, but I must have forgotten it.
Right, because that's why you...
I think that, it makes, it makes sense now.
Because that's why you do the warrant, to let the townspeople know, we're voting on this article. And this is how much it's gonna be if they know.
I did know that. I'm just, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay, so... So I think the only thing we have left is the position for Adam. I think that's it, right?
Can I ask you, Adam Pigners, would you go back now to the school board and say, we're gonna offer you one ten above minimum? Work on it?
Yeah, well, tell them.
We can do that.
Well, this is, this is what we, we decided on doing. This is what the article is gonna be. And we got...
Yeah, okay.
Are we voting on this now? On one ten?
Yeah, you need to vote on this to put it on the town, on the town meeting.
You can vote on that.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, do a hundred and ten thousand for the above minimum contribution to Quabog Regional School District.
You got the total.
With the total...
The article has to be the total.
Yeah, with Warren's total, four million forty-five thousand eight hundred nine dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Eddie, Eddie's aye. David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. And is FinCom good with that? And is FinCom good with that? Do you agree with it? No, it is now.
I mean, that's up to, you know, the segment have always voted the above minimum. FinCom never has really been involved.
Well, it's us to work together. Because we're all working on the finances for our town, the best of everybody in our community. So, we want your input.
Yep, so what do we, what do you do?
Our decisions and recommendations are for the benefit of the best interest of all.
The county school, you want to go ahead with it, or since they did, not a big deal.
Ray, you good with that?
Oh.
Yep.
It's funded that way?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. We just have Adam's is the last one.
Additional position.
Now that we're warmed up, let's deal with the fire department.
Well, we haven't taken, well, if you want to give...
I want to see, understand the overall first, before we discuss Adam's position.
If you give us, can we take a five minute, and we can go out and vote on this?
Sure. We can give you five minutes.
Jim, do you want to see what?
I got it.
You understand?
Good job.
I need a drink.
I have diet Dr. Pepper in my fridge.
Not bad, not bad.
Oh, sorry, that's all I have.
I don't drink alcohol, but I feel like I need a whiskey.
Wait, let me check my drawers.
I could just see.
Yeah, there's any bottles in here now. We took all those out.
To protect the public.
So, how you doing today? Better now?
That was quick. I mean, it's a new phase. And John's going to tell you.
Okay. Just an easy one.
We're back to Adam's additional position.
Yes, sir.
Which we passed over earlier on. And FinCom has had a discussion. And initially, we didn't know where the money would be coming from to fund this position, based on everything we had seen before us in the past with the schools and everything else. But I think since we've decreased the schools' position a little bit, that we would be in favor of funding that position for Adam. But we'd also ask the selectmen to see if they can come up with anything to help fund that as well. Seeing the school is doing their, you know, we're going to present this to the school. It's a significant chunk of change, which allows us to look at that position and support that position. Seeing it is a public safety, but we would still like the selectmen to look at their own budget to see if there's anything, any way they could come up with some savings in their own budget to help fund that position as well. That's our position.
Adam has already cut eighteen thousand, so, in his budget for this position, so...
Okay.
I think that's about it. I think we've covered everything, no?
Which article was that?
So, you'd be in support of it, so we got to come up with...
Number seven?
Three.
Number three.
Number three, was the article we're determining.
I think that's it, because the other ones we have to vote on too, I think we...
I know, but now, now you brought something back to our table, so we got to look at our budget.
I know, you have to look at your budget, you can't make a decision today. And we're meeting again on Tuesday. If we have to schedule another meeting, I'd love to be at the school committee meeting, but we're already booked Tuesday to go through the rest of our own budget to make sure that's okay.
Yeah, okay.
But we could be again, what, Thursday if we had to?
Well, they're, they're meeting on Thursday, so we would have to do it in four...
So, don't go anywhere yet.
Yeah, we're going to try and come up with...
We're going to work this out right now, so you can give Adam a decision.
Oh, we already gave it.
We already gave the decision.
We approved it.
We're approved, we're approved.
Yes, we support it.
No, we're not saying you have to pull it out of your budget. We're asking you to belly up to the bar and say, we've stripped the school committee of so much, the school's added so much money.
So, it's recommended...
Could you guys contribute as well?
Finance recommends?
Okay.
Sure, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, so...
So, I think we're looking at a legal budget. I don't know if I would recommend that.
All right, you know what?
Well, let's, let's look at all of it, and maybe we can take a little bit out of everything.
Or you want to stick.
What is Selectmen's Secretary for three thousand dollars? Backup? Backup, okay.
We do need to keep that under...
Okay. Shepherd Building expense? Could we level fund that, or take a little bit off? Oh, but that's like just trying to deal with fuel.
That's our bills, everything else.
And what are we running right now?
We are almost out of money right now on that one. We're at like seventy percent right now.
We reduced maintenance. The technology killed us.
Technology, we can't. Software, we can't.
Well, why was that doubled?
What's that?
Computer hardware software?
Uh, just for any new pieces of equipment, you know, if a computer goes down.
Wait, your copy, your copy.
Oh, thank you.
So, we can't do that with the five thousand?
Uh, maybe you could.
And we could supplement ARPER if we need to buy anything?
Well, for now.
Sure, sure.
So, let's take five thousand out of that. So, it's only five thousand now, so it's level funded, so there's no increase. So, that's five grand to Adam. I wouldn't touch the grants because we're actually getting money out of that. Town report, probably down to like generator expense.
It's a fixed contract.
Yeah. And boiler, we went up two because it looked like that's what we were spending.
For closure property, it could probably go down, because I don't think there's anything coming down the pipe.
No, they, isn't she done working on stuff?
She's working on some stuff, yeah.
Yeah, she's working on stuff in that, so...
I just don't know if she lowered her budget in that, so that's why...
We can't do anything with benefits, right?
No.
But legal, they still haven't, this budget, this year's budget, though, legal expense to date is way under.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's a tough call, you know.
But the thing is, you can cut it now, and if something big comes up...
So, let's go at seventy-five thousand for legal.
And then you could always get it at the special.
So, cut it by twenty-five thousand, give Adam twenty-five.
So, that's thirty, that's forty-eight, closing.
I don't know that we can cut anything else. Because everything, like, you know, a lot of this stuff we can't really touch, right?
Do you still want to do the facilities manager's position?
Correct, and then, no.
Well, they only asked us to address the...
When we get the certified, from the town floor.
The fire sheet thing, so...
When she certified, the town would pay us.
Well, so we came up with thirty thousand right there.
Right there, yeah.
We would cut.
You guys are thirty thousand, good with thirty thousand?
We're good with any of them. All we're asking you to do is take it out of that. If you can't do anything, you understand that?
How much is that one now?
If you can do something, we appreciate that.
No, you guys, you guys came to us, and we're going to work together with this, and...
If you can't find a way to cut it out, then we're already pretty much okay with the budget.
She's going to have that, so when she gets to TME, it's going to be a hundred...
More to lessen the impact.
Are you going to cut twenty-five thousand out of the...
If it turns out we need more, we can go back, but for now...
I mean, we had to put more in last year. At, you know, ninety-two hundred.
This is forty-six, seventy-one.
But we just concluded one maybe, so we'll have a little bit more, but that's all this year's expense.
Jim, you've been watching us really closely. I mean, we're, we're right for our, we just got our bill in from KP Law for last month. I haven't got McCormick's for last month, but as of last month, we still have fifty thousand dollars in that, in that account. I don't think we're going to spend fifty thousand between now and the end of the year.
KP Law will go up between now and the end of the year because of special town meeting and annual town meeting. It will go up.
But I think if we're at seventy-five, we're okay at seventy-five, but if we go beyond that...
And their fees went up, as you know.
Well, their fees went up. That's why I wouldn't go less than that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit of a risk, but I think, you know...
Make it eighty?
Well, you've got thirty thousand.
That's thirty thousand.
That's thirty, towards his, yeah.
Seventy-five out of legal.
No, 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 twenty-five.
Twenty-five out of legal. Two-seventy-five.
Yeah, legal's seventy-five thousand now. We've given them twenty-five.
Computer is down five, so we're level funding computer.
So, it's only two.
Yep.
Seventy-five and five thousand.
Yep.
So, that gives him thirty thousand towards it. Are you good with that?
Yeah, we just made it whatever you can do to help, you know.
Having his guy is more important to us than anything else we'll deal with.
In that forty-six, right, but we, as the committee, thought that, you know, everybody, you know, has been holding their budget, we've been doing, everybody's doing very good. And as I said to Adam at our meeting, I basically said, I wouldn't be concerned if we gave a no recommendation, because the taxpayers of this town has always supported highway, police, and fire.
The taxpayers are very angry this year. And understandably.
But that's what I'm saying, that they've always have, but that doesn't mean that it wouldn't happen. And that's why John had suggested, because Jim was there, right? That, to see if, you know, because everybody else is two percent, one percent, three percent. They just don't have the money. The only other people have the next biggest budget, unfortunately.
Oh, we have the deep pockets, huh?
No, but what I'm saying, but, you know, where you could. And then if something happens, you always have the, you'll get a special, or something with legal, we end up with a big case in, you know, September, October, or you're aware of this going to be, you got the special in November.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, that's why we wanted to wait, do the omnibus budget and see how everything went.
All right, so I'll make a motion to set computer hardware software to five thousand dollars. Cut that in half, and to make law department expense seventy-five thousand, which would cut it by twenty-five percent.
Second?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Eddie, Eddie's aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
And the thing is too, you know, that also, you know, you've covered enough money for the, for the salary. But how much is it for the benefits?
Benefits, it's a benefit position, so that, but, hey, it is what it is, right?
Well, yeah. We did offset it some, so...
Did our due diligence.
Well, that's it, that's it.
And say, thank you very much for all your help, and all your dedication to doing it. It's a tough job, and I'm really glad that you guys are doing it.
Yeah, but that's the thing, but the departments themselves, too. They didn't come in with any real wide, you know, expenses, they...
Everybody came in, they were pretty reasonable with their requests and everything, so...
You know, we had questions for the Parks Department, and we had questions for Highway. You know, Adam came back to us, because we, he, when he found out that we did not support it, he came back with cuts for eighteen thousand dollars, okay? So, he did his due diligence, you know, and, you know, that's how I look at it, is that's the most that you can do.
But they really think we should get a handle on...
I just want to thank the Finance Committee, I want to thank the Select Board, I want to thank Jim, Karen, you know, I really do appreciate the support, and I really, this is a perfect example of everyone working together to get to a goal. So, thank you very much.
Our comments about ambulance service was not directed at, you know, we know we need it. It's just that we need to understand where our town's money's going, and if we have to continue to support it, that's okay, but we'd just like to know what percentage...
If there's anything that can help with the write-offs. I mean, because you vote on them, you see them four times a year, and you see the totals.
Yep, we got to write them off each year, and, you know, it's sad that we got to do that, but we understand too, you know, trying to, trying to deal with somebody that in a financial bad place, or fixed income, and to put such a big debt on them, it's difficult, and we all hurt in the community, you know. We're doing our best, you know, and I agree. You know, some things shouldn't be, just forgiven. We should be getting the money from those.
Right, but the Medicaid ones, you can't charge it, you can't get it.
You can't do anything, it's a history.
Right, it's, it's gone, and that's...
Adam does an amazing job with it, and he explains it each time, too, and we understand him.
Yep. That's it, ready.
All right, so you guys adjourned?
Oh, we already did.
We already adjourned.
We adjourned, which we can't let...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we'll vote on the other ones on Tuesday, the ones that we just got in with us waiting for numbers for the Shepherd Building, whatever.
Are you going to be there Tuesday, or you...
Uh, yes, I hope to go to your meeting and then...
What time is the school committee?
Six-thirty.
We're on at six, so I'll try to make it quick.
Yeah, we only got a few things to over.
Would I like to follow you up there?
Yep.
Yeah, actually, would be good.
Yeah, you guys should be there.
Yeah.
I just said, it can't be two, three places at once.
Yeah, we already posted for six, so don't forget to pile. See you guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the donation.
No, you're welcome.
Do you guys have anything else? Do we have anything else we need to take care of?
Not that I know of.
Well, you have one article, you have to decide how you're wording it and what you're doing with it. The one that was confusing, that they passed on, the facility manager.
Well, I think we know what we have to do, is just change the BM one to BM two, right?
Yeah, BM, yeah.
Okay.
Like, that's it.
Okay. I just know they put a hold on it, so I didn't know if you guys needed to discuss it more.
I don't think so. Change it to BM two? Right? Why do you look like you're daring him?
It's up to you guys.
Oh, I'm looking at you, I'm like, all right. Do we have anything else?
Nope, I guess not, right?
You good? Anything else? Long day? Thank you very much for all your dedication. Again, we save the best for last, and I think we're going to adjourn now, huh?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?